Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order on June 12th at 3:30. Roll call.
Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flohr. Mr. Davenport.
Here.
Ms. Franco.
Here.
Ms. Black. Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Okay, any cards?
No cards.
No cards. Okay, so we will go into closed session.
Dr. DiAgostino will be in with you guys.
Okay, thank you. Meeting to order, June 12th at 6:04. We apologize for being late, but the, we had a retirement ceremony and it went over a little bit, so we ate in 10 minutes. Okay, we are going, I have a readout. And that is in closed session. The board took action to release and non-reelect five temporary certificated employees pursuant to Education Code Section 44954 effective at the end of the 2017-18 school year and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows, ayes, seven, noes, zero. So, oh yes, I'm moving. Okay, so we are going to start with a moment of reflection and a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Are you going to lead it, Van?
Sure thing.
Okay.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so adoption of agenda.
So, move the job, adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so the adoption of the agenda was moved by Ms. Franco and seconded by Mr. Davenport. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, adoption of minutes from May 22nd, 2018.
Who adopted of the minutes of May 22nd, 2018? Second.
Okay, it was moved by Ms. Flohr, seconded by Ms. Yelsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I wasn't here, so I...
That's okay, abstain.
Abstain. Oh, okay, I'm fine. I'm fine. Any noes? Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to the recognition. Dr. Navarro.
Okay, for this first one, I'm going to go down to the podium. So as you know, it's become tradition to recognize some outstanding seniors from this year's class, and these seniors are exemplars of the incredible character of our students across the district. And each year, we ask schools to nominate students who best epitomize the qualities of each character trait that we teach in our school district. So I'd first like to ask Dr. Bolton to come up from Newport Harbor High School. Okay, we'll find him later. Let's get Mr. Holt from...
He just went out to look for him.
He just went out to do that.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Members of the board, it's my pleasure to actually recognize two outstanding members from Estancia. The first eagle I'd like to call forward is Ms. Emily Kibitsky. Emily came to Estancia three years ago, and you could tell right away that she was going to be a special eagle and make great contributions. She's been a member of our band for three years and astounded out member of our softball team for three years. She was nominated and received the award for fairness, and I'd like to read a couple of ways in which Emily constantly models this. Emily consistently models fairness by listening to all points of view during activities, lessons, and she upholds the expectations of leadership and collaboration in the classroom setting. She is a LINK leader at Estancia, which is a program designed to help with the freshman transition, and works daily with a group of 12 freshmen, helping build, helping lead team-building activities, set positive examples, and encourage them to do better. She actively helps students participate in a positive way. When freshman students experience disagreement, Emily facilitates positive communication and helps all parties understand different points of view. She pursues positive solutions to all problems. Her ability to work hard and play fair is also evidenced on the softball field where she exemplifies the CIF models of victory with honor. Emily will be graduating and will go on to UC, I'm sorry, to San Jose State where she plans on majoring in environmental engineering, I'm sorry, environmental science.
Yes.
I actually had this written down, but clearly stumbled. So Emily, you're wonderful. I'm not, but you're great. The next senior I'd like to recognize is Mr. Jimmy Brown. He can stand next to Dr. Navarro, look back at your mom. I hope the board won't mind the back. James was nominated and received the award for outstanding citizenship. James contributes to Estancia in many ways beyond academics. He's a peer mentor to ninth-grade students as a LINK crew leader, and he actively participates in Estancia's youth and government program and has done so for three years. He currently serves as our delegation president. James is a member of Estancia's Leo Club through the Leos International and the Interact Club through the Rotary Club, which both promote leadership and responsible citizenship. James is also a peer tutor and has volunteered at local homeless shelters and helped contribute and helped coordinate food and clothing drives. James is all about politics and making our community better, which is why we are proud to nominate him for the category of great citizenship. Upon graduation, Jimmy's going to be going to UCLA where he's going to have a major that is way too difficult for me to say. It is...
Pre-microbiology, immunology, and molecular genetics.
And trust me, if I got Emily's wrong, there's no way I was getting that one right.
Okay, next, I'd like to bring up Dr. Haley.
Yes, and I would like to welcome up Zaid Batarse up here. Come on, for responsibility, come on up, Zaid. You've got to love events like this when you have the pillar of responsibility because you know Zaid's going to show up. Zaid has participated in our marching band at Costa Mesa, the luxury of a 712 school, for five years. He's been a drum major of the band for the past two years. He has been a fantastic, responsible role model for all of his peers. He makes sure everyone is informed, included, and represented. He extends his responsibility to the whole school with school spirit at various school events. He mentors young members of the middle school and volunteers to work with our elementary students during the summer. He always shows love and care for Costa Mesa High School and its fellow peers. He's taken his school leadership role seriously, whether a mentor, running community events, or fundraising. His responsibility runs regular meetings with his peers and organizes students in various roles to implement community and fundraising projects. Recently, at our Prom 2.0, because we postponed the week, Zaid was voted on by his peers as our prom king. Zaid's college and career path, and I claim dibs, secondary schools, is follows passive music and becoming a music teacher, band director for high school students. He has been a wonderful asset to our school, and he embeds everything that's responsible for our school. So Zaid, congratulations.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask Mrs. Kathy Scott to come up to the mic.
Good evening. So I'm very excited to introduce our character of trait selection is Mr. Ryan Hamilton. Ryan has been, he is well-deserving of this honor, and I would like to tell you a little bit about him. Last school year, Ryan was assigned through his IEP to work in the main office three days a week to further develop his executive functioning skills. We were very excited for the opportunity to help Ryan, but we quickly learned Ryan would be helping us. Once Ryan understood all the expectations and procedures, he became the most trustworthy student we've ever had to ever help out in the office. And if the office staff to this day has any important task to be completed, the ladies make sure to wait for the days that Ryan's on duty, which is three days a week, when he'll be working, because they know he would be fully trusted to do exactly what he's supposed to do, when he's supposed to do it, and how he's supposed to do it. And the best part is Ryan does it always with such joy, positivity, and happiness. And we love Ryan Hamilton, so thank you. This is Ryan's teacher, Ms. Hitchcock.
Okay, next, I would like to have Dr. David Martinez come up.
Well, good evening, President Snell, board trustees, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, and other distinguished guests. Our recipient, Alexander Johnson, could not be here tonight. He's out of town. For those not familiar with early college, we wrapped up on May 31st, and like many of our seniors, they took off on a trip, a well-deserved trip, in the summer before they start college. But they want to express their gratitude for Alex being chosen as the superintendent's character graduate honoree for the pillar of respect. And some words I want to say about Alex is that over the years at ECHS, his consideration towards others have not wavered with classmates and our staff. He firmly believes in accepting differences and others and practices tolerance of differing ideas, both in the classroom and his interactions with people in general. When you have a conversation with Alex, he consistently demonstrates his ability to be an active listener and generally cares about whatever the people have to express. He's a very balanced thinker and is easygoing and mild-mannered. It's actually his responses to his classmates. He does so in a very careful demeanor when we have Socratic seminars, debates. He wants to arrive at consensus and accept understanding after all voices have been heard and acknowledged. So Alex is also one of our Les Miller Outstanding Student recipients. He is one of our valedictorian graduates, and he had a perfect 4.0 GPA. He was a member of the National Honor Society and part of Avid since 2016. Of his 250 credits that he earned at ECHS, 60 of those were in college courses through Coastline Community College. He plans to major in music industry studies because he is quite an accomplished musician on the guitar. If you ever see those fingers on the strings, you know what I'm talking about. But he is going to be going to Cal Poly Pomona, so I'd like to recognize Alex Johnson.
Okay, and I see that Dr. Bolton is back in the room. Come on up, Dr. Bolton.
President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and distinguished guests, thank you for having us here today. And our character award is going to Miranda McCormick for caring. And this is a, this account is told in first person, and it happened in Mrs. Coughfield's class, but it just kind of, it evolved over the course of the school year in her IBHL2 class. It's an English class, but it gives you insight and it gives you a little window into the type of person Miranda is, and it's quite significant. "I met Miranda last year in my IBHL Literature 1 AB class. It was a strong class with many positive, skilled, and driven students. Miranda did not immediately stand out. However, I soon began to notice her incredible kindness and care to others. I had a student in the room with a mental disability, and while no one knew of her condition, Miranda seemed drawn to help her. She unobtrusively attended to many of her needs and would set up study sessions with her to help her through the class. I noted all of this, but Miranda never mentioned it to me nor anyone else that I knew. She had great talent in helping her peer, her peers and others in the class, but it was never egotistical or seeking reward. It was simply a part of who she was. Quite frankly, her kindness, patience, and effectiveness as a tutor deeply impressed me. I was not surprised to later learn of Miranda's background of caring and for her tutoring younger dyslexic sister throughout her life. Miranda, that speaks volumes for who you are and why you were nominated, and we couldn't be prouder at Newport Harbor High School that you're representing our school with the superintendent's character awards."
Dr. Navarro, I thought it would be nice to give Emily a chance to get her picture with her parents.
Sure.
If they're here, because she, we weren't doing that then. Emily, are you here? Did you?
Well, we tried to get Mom.
Perfect. Thank you. Sometimes we just...
Roll.
So if you didn't notice as you came in, to members of our audience, their banners are hanging already up in the lobby, and they'll be there for the entire year. Next year, we'll invite them back to pick them up and keep them as a souvenir. But these are, you know, incredible students that really are symbols of the great things that we have in our, in our student body. We have many, many students that could have been given this award. It's a difficult choice, but I tell you, these are great examples of what our kids are like and, and the spirit that lives in them. Not just their brains, but the kind of people they are. And that's what's nice about this recognition. It's about who you are, not necessarily what you've accomplished, although who you are means a lot when it comes to what you accomplish. So thank you very much, and I hope everybody makes sure to take a look at their banners as they're hanging out there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, since this is award season, we have some more awards to give out. If the awards we just gave, if you would like to leave, feel free to go through the glass doors or go through there. And the next awards, I am going to turn over to, who am I turning it over to? Dr. Bowermeisters.
President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and distinguished guests, it's with great pleasure that we are recognizing two CIF championships this evening for the spring sports season. Both of these championship teams hail from Coronel Del Mar High School. The first CIF Southern Section champion to be recognized is the Coronel Del Mar Boys' volleyball team. We all know how difficult it is to win a league championship, and to win a CIF crown certainly puts you in select company. The Coronel Del Mar Boys' volleyball team not only won a CIF Southern Section championship, but a Southern California Regional Championship and a national championship.
Wow.
And by the way, the second-ranked team in the United States is Newport Harbor High School. So the number one and two-ranked teams in the United States were both from Newport Mesa Unified School District. So with that, I'd like to ask Coronel Mar Principal Kathy Scott to the podium to introduce her coaching team.
Looks like we'll have to introduce...
Here she comes. Here she comes. She's trying to get through the boys. She's trying to get through.
You're a little minion over there.
Okay, here we go. So, good evening, President Snell, board members, cabinet, and all of our guests tonight. This is very exciting for CDM, so I'm not sure what we've introduced so far. Are we ready for volleyball?
Yes.
All right, they're all here, look back there at them. So let me tell you a little bit about our Boys' volleyball team. They finished this season with an overall record of 34-4, finishing their league season as undefeated league champions. From that point, we went on to, we went on to win five straight tough CIF playoff matches, ending with a dramatic five-set victory over Newport Harbor, is Dr. Bolton still here? To win the CIF Division One Championship. Then we went, then we won three straight tournament matches, culminating with the victory over Newport Harbor to win the Division One Southern California Regional Championship. The result of these accomplishments is that our team is now ranked the number-one team in the nation by Max Prep. And so at this time, I want to introduce to you our head coach, Steve Conti, so that he can introduce the players of our team. We're very proud of them.
Thank you for having us in this evening and honoring this wonderful Boys' team that we have. It was a very special year, just winning a CIF and state regional championship, but getting to play against your crosstown rival. And the environment that both teams got to play in was truly unique. We'll honor these boys. Nick Calacano. Brandon Browning. Austin Chandler. Adam Flood. Tyler Flood. Jaden Glenn. Brandon Hicks. Kevin Coburn. Matt Olson. Patrick Paragus. Shane Simpson. And Patrick Nguyen.
They know the routine. No, there's, there's a couple of them that are trying to be taller.
Okay, congratulations. So again, you can, you can move on.
Coach, 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 how many are returning?
We have six, six returning.
Oh, boy. Next year, huh?
Graduated a lot of good seniors, but we did, we did the same thing the previous year, so...
You got it.
The bar said hi.
This was a surprise season, and it was a lot of fun.
Mrs. Snell, can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to say, I am a superfan of this team. And I mean, if anybody has seen them play, the last two matches against Newport Harbor were amazing, and I know, we can only invite winner, winning teams, otherwise we'd be spending our whole meeting time acknowledging teams that come in here, but it's really a shame that we could not have Newport Harbor here as well.
Yes.
Because the two of those teams, you feel like you're not watching a high school match. I mean, it's really very high level, so congratulations to them. They were really superb.
It was fun to watch. It's the best boys' volleyball I've seen ever because it was so competitive. And I thank you, Ms. Yelsey, because it was truly two very competitive teams. Either team could have won and would have been well-deserved winners, so thank you for that. So also, I'd like to recognize, there they are, our, they may be few, but they're very mighty, our Boys' golf team. They finished nine and six overall, six and four in an extremely tough league for golf, finishing in a three-way tie for second place despite averaging less than 39 strokes per player over nine holes for the season. Since we lost the league in a tiebreaker, we entered the South Coast Divisional Tournament as an at-large team. However, by shooting an overall team score of 374 for five players over 18 holes, our average score for each player was under 75 at a tough Taliga golf course. This resulted in our team being the first ever at-large team to win a CIF Division Championship. So at this time, I'd like to bring up our head coach, Mike Starkweather, so that he can introduce each of our players on this team. We're very proud of them as well.
Introduce your trusty partner, Karla.
Sure. This is Carlos Navarrete. He's my assistant coach, and without him, it'd be impossible. This is the goal, everybody.
Oh, wow.
This is the goal.
Great.
This is, in the Boys', this is the fifth one that we've gotten since I've been coaching. And a remarkable season. In 25 years of coaching this sport, to have a tie in a competition is virtually unheard of because you're throwing up a lot of scores. We had four ties this year, broken by tiebreakers, as difficult as it was down the line. Our league is so tough that, as she mentioned, we were fourth place in our league, and we went to CIF as an at-large. We had to petition to get in, and the kids really performed... So we'll do the reports first. So why don't we start with Max Johnson? Why don't we start with Van?
Whoever?
You're already telling me what to do. I want to start with you.
Hi, my name is Max Johnson. I'm giving a student board report for Coronel Del Mar High School. Thank you, everyone, for being here. First off, last night, we had our academic awards night. Also, thanks to all the board members and other district members that were there. It's great to see you all. And then this week, we actually have two, it's like a double-themed week. We have de-stress week for finals coming up next week, and we also have rainbow week, which is just supporting inclusion with all of our students. We also, last week, hosted a unified Sea Kings Sporting Event, which we played kickball that was hosted by the Special Olympics, and we combined both special and general education students playing kickball with our softball and baseball players. Upcoming events that we have is Thursday, this week, we have the Living History Veterans Project, where we have a lot of veterans come to our campus, and we're having an amazing luncheon. And then also next week is, we have our final week of school and finals week, so I know all the underclassmen are getting ready for that. And while the underclassmen are getting ready for that, all the seniors on Monday have a breakfast on campus, and then Tuesday, we're going to Disneyland, and Wednesday, we have a luncheon with some of the senior teachers and all of the seniors, and then Thursday, we graduate. So that's it.
Pretty cool.
Thank you so much, and had an amazing year representing CDM.
Thank you so much. Lauren.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's right, because you're all here. Okay, I can't see any more signs.
Rachel.
Good evening, board. I'm Rachel Krikorian, representing Coast Mesa High School. We are getting super excited for our graduating class of 2018, and we cannot wait to have our senior week. There's lots of things planned for them. Despite some minor setbacks due to the fire in the Aliso Laguna Canyon, we had our prom postponed to the following Saturday, which was a few days ago, the ninth, and it was absolutely beautiful. It was the same time, same place, just a different day. We had a DJ, as well as a live swing band outside, and they actually invited students to perform with them. It was really awesome. We had unlimited desserts and photo booth strips, as well as professional photos to purchase. We recently hosted our Mustangs Awards, where we recognized our top 12 students in each course, and so that was really fun. It was in the morning, and then we followed it with some breakfast. And then it's a Mesa tradition for each class cabinet to host a bonfire for their grade, so we're really looking forward to those. And our first one is this Saturday. It's a freshman. And lastly, our junior class is preparing for their senior takeover, where on the last day of school, the juniors take over the senior quad, and each student is charged $2 to get in with ASB and three without. And we really go all out. The night before, we deck out the whole quad in Saran Wrap, and the whole floor is covered in balloons, and the whole side of the library is covered with a huge poster. We get a live DJ. We're going to try to get the Kona Ice Shave Ice Truck to come. We're going to have ping pong and cornhole and games all day and Polaroid pictures, and so we really can't wait. And I had such a joy presenting this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, who we have over there?
Andrea.
Ah, hi.
Hello, good evening. My name's Andrea, I'm representing for Estancia. So we had our academic assembly last Tuesday to recognize students who improved their GPA, A3G eligibility for the UC's USC's campus seniors, and then the participation from ASB, Link Crew, HOSA, and also Project Lead the Way. Starting with the next week, we are taking our finals. We also have senior activities next week as well, including a pool party and also our senior brunch. Our graduation is on June 21st at 3:00 p.m. at Jim Scott Stadium, and that's pretty much it. I want to just thank you guys for having me here as a student representative.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, everyone. You need to get happy.
Thanks, I try. I'm Jalen. I'm from Newport Harbor. So most recently, we had our prom rally and our prom at the Yost Theater. We had a successful grit cycle event benefiting the Newport Harbor Education Foundation. Our Bridges program honored four of our teachers on campus who they felt positively influenced them and impacted our campus. We had our 57th Annual Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Athletes of the Year Dinner. Our senior award ceremony is this upcoming week. And at the OC Human Relations Award Ceremony, one of our teachers was awarded the Outstanding Bridges School Award. Our senior dinner is this next Tuesday, and we're also entering finals week. And then, of course, our class of 2018 is graduating on Thursday.
Now, does the T-shirt have any significance that you're wearing?
Yeah, I'm going to Texas A&amp;M.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, you're a delight. Thank you. Okay, now we have Van. No. No.
We made him wait.
We made him wait.
I decided I was going last.
I'm just feeling kind of frisky tonight, so I made him wait.
Might as well, right? It's the last night, what can you lose?
I know.
Anyway, my name is Van Fine, representing Beck Bay Montevista. It's been a great time, a wild ride. Got a couple short little things to talk about today. Basically, end-of-the-year stuff. We don't have finals, so that's always fun. Our school awards night last Thursday went very well. Over $100,000 in scholarships were given out to our students. I'm told that the food was pretty good as well. Our guest speaker series has continued, as we recently welcomed Crystal Sanchez of the OCDE Safe From the Start Program. The OC Safe From the Start vision is to empower individuals, families, organizations, and communities to reduce children's exposure to violence and reinforce the belief that every Orange County child is my concern. Between Beck Bay Montevista this year, we have already had 57 students complete necessary graduation requirements and have started college or joined the workforce as high school graduates. On June 21st, we anticipate another 30 more graduates joining us for our graduation celebration at St. Andrews Church in Newport Beach. Also, I want to talk about prom. It was really, really cool what they did. They got five continuation schools in the area to come together to do a continuation school prom. It was casino night themed, they had blackjack, they had roulette. It was a whole lot of fun. It was a really great idea, and I hope they do something like that again next year, but maybe even bigger.
Great.
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the support you guys have given me as board member this year. I've learned a lot. I hope I've given something back, maybe a little bit, and I just really want to thank you guys. It's been great.
Thank you. It's been great.
I think we all can agree that we've had a great group of student board members this year, and we want to thank each and every one of you. We have some certificates, so I'll call you up again, but it's really been a remarkable year. And to the seniors, good luck with whatever college, activity, whatever you're doing. And with those who are returning, we may see you here, but I'm sure we'll see you on campus if we don't. So thank you, and I'll call you guys up.
Maybe you stay up here, yeah. Yeah, good. We're all about the photos. Yeah. Lauren Griffin. Rachel Krikorian. Aaron Nguyen. Andy Agastre. Crystal Torres. Holly Kane. I didn't see her. Georgia. Alexandra Leon and Lucy Matrin from early college, I don't believe. Nope, they're not here. They graduated. Melanie Duness also has graduated from Beck Bay. Okay.
I see you guys in two rows, and sorry, you get the B-team with an iPhone. Matthew Bale.
Nothing better than parent paparazzi.
I know. Okay, thank you. We're going to miss you, some of you. I mean, I'd all be in that way. Some of you will be gone. That's what I meant. No, I know it's a lot to come here twice a month, and... We know. And I understand. So we really appreciate hearing about your schools, and so it's been great to get to know you and have you participate in local government. What do you think? They're all just wishing to go into politics and do all this. Yep, exactly. Okay. So now we have the final Harbor Council PTA report, Cynthia Strassman.
Good evening, President Snell, Dr. Navarro, board, cabinet, community members, and spirit, or student leaders. I guess you're spirited.
Yeah, there you go.
I just have a couple things to share. We did have our last council meeting last week, and what we did differently for this particular meeting was, not only did we, you know, the current PTA presidents attend it, but we invited their newly-elected executive board members to attend. And we wanted to take that opportunity to welcome them into the council. Sometimes new PTA leaders are kind of, I don't want to say hesitant, but they're kind of, you know, what's this Harbor Council all about? So we wanted to just set the tone that we're warm, inclusive, we're friendly, and that we're here to partner with them and to ensure their success as leaders. And we did take that opportunity as well to provide a PTA leadership in service during this meeting. Happy to report, we had about 75 in attendance.
Wow.
So that was well-attended and well-received, so we will be continuing on doing that again next year. Secondly, I want to thank Dr. Navarro and district for partnering with Harbor Council. We met, Vicky Waldo, our president, and I met with Dr. Navarro early this year, and we discussed the possibility of having parent ed forums next year to address some of issues that, you know, our families and students are facing, given some, you know, situations that we've had to endure this year. And through that meeting and collaboration with the district, we also reached out to parent representatives in each of those zones, the high schools, middle, and elementary schools. They all met two weeks ago, and through that meeting, there was a sharing of ideas and issues that are unique to their zones, their areas. And we're in the development stage of the calendar and parent ed forums for next year, so stay tuned. More information will be forthcoming in August, September. Dr. Navarro? Okay. So more on that later. And lastly, what's moving ahead for what's to come with Harbor Council? We have a planning session in August, and we'll be identifying our goals for the next year, hopefully to include continued PTA leadership development and membership recruitment and retention. One idea to leave you all with, we may have a healthy student high school membership challenge, a Battle of the Bays. That's been tossed around between Newport Harbor and Coronel Del Mar. It's all in the talking phase at this time, so we will share later. It's been a fantastic year. We've had a lot of growth within our council, a lot of great things that have come from that. We have some great leaders in our units, and we're excited, but the new year will lend us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, student board members, if you would like to take your leave, you may, or you can stick around for the reports. We have like...
You can take your nameplates.
Those are yours. Wear them proudly tomorrow at school. Okay, so moving on to reports. The first 14A is a financial report from the Citizens Oversight Committee regarding Measure F expenditures. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trader? Or, it says...
Mr. Holcomb.
Oh, Mr. Hol... Oh, is he back?
Yep, he's here.
He's hiding. He must be Mr. Holcomb. Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, we're very happy tonight to have the chairman of the Citizens Oversight Committee here to present a report to you on the financial expenditures and the performance of the Measure F bond funds. As you know, we're coming to the end of the bond program, and there was a short period of time where the district had a hard time getting an oversight committee together, but we've had a really great group of community members who have been meeting regularly, and they're here to give you their first report as a new committee. And here's Mr. Vance.
Good evening, President Snell and Dr. Navarro and members of the board. My name is Mitch Vance, and it's a real privilege to serve as the chairman this year of the Measure F Citizens Oversight Committee on behalf of all of our seven members. I'd like to start by just quickly reviewing and reminding everyone why I'm here and representing the committee. In 2005, the committee was established by the school board for the primary purpose of ensuring that our taxpayers, ensuring our taxpayers that the expenditures from the bond funds are consistently, consistent with the stated purposes in Measure F. In other words, that our job is to confirm that the school district is using the bond funds in the way that we promised our taxpayers. Our members are appointed by the school board, and they represent a broad range of constituency groups in the community.
Nothing better than parent paparazzi.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna miss you, some of you. I mean, I'd all be in that way. Some of you will be gone. That's what I meant. No, I know, I know it's a lot to come here twice a month, and...
We know.
And I understand. So, we really appreciate hearing about your schools, and it's been great to get to know you and have you participate in local government. What do you think?
They're all just wishing to go into politics and do all this.
Yep, exactly. Okay. So, now we have the final Harbor Council PTA report. Cynthia Strassman.
Good evening, President Snell, Dr. Navarro, Board, Cabinet, Community Members, and Spirit, or Student Leaders. I guess I could, you're spirited.
Yeah, there you go.
I just have a couple things to share. We did have our last council meeting last week, and what we did differently for this particular meeting was, not only did we, you know, the current PTA presidents attended, but we invited their newly-elected executive board members to attend. And we wanted to take that opportunity to welcome them into the council. Sometimes new PTA leaders are kind of, I don't want to say hesitant, but they're kind of, you know, what's this Harbor Council all about? So, we wanted to just set the tone that we're warm, inclusive, we're friendly, and that we're here to partner with them and to ensure their success as leaders. And we did take that opportunity as well to provide a PTA leadership in service during this meeting. Happy to report, we had about seventy-five in attendance.
Wow.
So, that was well-attended and well-received, so we will be continuing on doing that again next year. Secondly, I want to thank Dr. Navarro and District for partnering with Harbor Council. We met, Vicky Waldo, our president, and I met with Dr. Navarro early this year, and we discussed the possibility of having parent ed forums next year to address some of issues of, that, you know, our families and students are facing, given some, you know, situations that we've had to endure this year. And through that meeting and collaboration with the District, we also reached out to parent representatives in each of those zones, the high schools, middle, and elementary schools. They all met two weeks ago, and through that meeting, there was a sharing of ideas and issues that are unique to their zones, their areas. And we're in the development stage of the calendar and parent ed forums for next year. So, stay tuned, more information will be forthcoming in August, September? Dr. Navarro? Okay. So, more on that later. And lastly, what's moving ahead for what's to come with Harbor Council? We have a planning session in August, and we'll be identifying our goals for the next year, hopefully to include continued PTA leadership, development, and membership recruitment and retention. One idea to leave you all with, we may have a healthy student high school membership challenge, a Battle of the Bays. That's been tossed around between Newport Harbor and Corona Del Mar. It's all in the talking phase this time, so we will share later. It's been a fantastic year, we've had a lot of growth within our council, a lot of great things that have come from that. We have some great leaders in our units, and we're excited, but the new year will lend us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, student board members, if you would like to take your leave, you may. Or you can stick around for the reports, we have like...
You can take your nameplates.
Those are yours.
Wear them proudly tomorrow at school.
Okay, so, moving on to reports. The first fourteen A is a financial report from the Citizens Oversight Committee regarding Measure F expenditures. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Trader? Or, it says, oh, Mr. Hol- oh, is he, oh, he's backed up.
Yep, he's here.
He's hiding, he's hiding. Must be Mr. Holcomb.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, we're very happy tonight to have the chairman of the Citizens Oversight Committee here to present a report to you on the financial expenditures and the performance of the Measure F bond funds. As you know, we're coming to the end of the bond program, and there was a short period of time where the District had a hard time getting an oversight committee together, but we've had a really great group of community members who have been meeting regularly, and they're here to give you their first report as a new committee. And here's Mr. Vance.
Good evening, President Snell, and Dr. Navarro, and members of the Board. My name is Mitch Vance, and it's a real privilege to serve as the chairman this year of the Measure F Citizens Oversight Committee on behalf of all of our seven members. I'd like to start by just quickly reviewing and reminding everyone why I'm here and representing the committee. In 2005, the committee was established by the school board for the primary purpose of ensuring that our tax, ensuring our taxpayers that the expenditures from the bond funds are consistently, consistent with the stated purposes in Measure F. In other words, that our job is to confirm that the school district is using the bond funds in the way that we promised our taxpayers. Our members are appointed by the school board, and they represent a broad range of constituency groups in the community. And our committee will serve until the last dollar of Measure F bond funds are spent. We perform our charter, or duty, by meeting about four times a year with the senior management of the District, and as necessary, the architects, builders, and independent auditors. During these meetings, they present a detailed update of the planning, scheduling, budgeting, and expenditures on all the Measure F-funded projects. And then we probe, and we sometimes prod them with lots of questions and issues, sometimes for hours. And they graciously and patiently answer our questions, and often provide additional data for us to review, until all of our members of the committee are satisfied that we are doing our job on behalf of you and the taxpayers. Also, annually, during one of our fall meetings, we also interview the independent auditor firm, who does two things. They audit the financials of the Measure F building fund, which contains the bond proceeds, and they complete a performance audit, which ensures that the expenditures are complying with the relevant sections of the California Constitution, as well as the provisions of Measure F. So, on behalf of our committee, I'm pleased to report that for the most recent two fiscal years, ending June 30, 2017 and 16, our independent auditor has given the District's Measure F Building Fund financial statements an unqualified opinion, which means a clean bill of health, both for the financial and performance audits. Our committee has also periodically reviewed all the expenditures from the Measure F funds, including focusing on the expenditures related to the Davidson Field renovation, which comprises the vast majority of funding from Measure F over the past couple of years. And we feel the Davidson Field renovation is an outstanding example of design and construction, but it was expensive, and we wanted to better understand the almost sixteen point one million that was spent on the project. After considerable review of documents, lots of Q and A with District executives and managers, our committee members are very satisfied with the expenditures, and we believe they are in keeping with the requirements of Measure F as approved by the taxpayers. I'd also like to mention that we found Tim Holcomb, Tim Marsh, Jeff Trader, and all the other District managers and staff we interacted with to be approachable, responsive, and not withstanding our often very annoying probing styles, patient during our review process, and we commend them for the job they are doing in measuring and managing the Measure F projects. So, ladies and gentlemen, that ends my report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, do you have any questions? So, you're staying on for the next project, this committee, our theater project?
Yes, our committee will serve until all of Measure F funds are spent.
Okay.
Yes, they have terms that they were appointed to, and, pardon me, as those terms come up, we will re-approach the board with continuing per the bylaws or appointing new members to the committee. But with your change to the bylaws of the committee to allow it to be seven members versus the old number of thirty-one, it's much easier to, at this late stage in the bond program, to obtain the interest from members. And we really, I've said this at every single meeting, and it's absolutely true, the folks who have been showing up have just been doing a fantastic job, and, you know, it's not as exciting in the bond campaign now as it is at the very beginning. So, it really is a commitment to the community shown by these members, and they have done a great job on behalf of the taxpayers.
Well, they'll get a good flavor of the whole thing with the theater, they'll start to finish on that one.
So, thank you, Mr. Vance, and please pass on our thanks to the committee members for your service. We appreciate it.
I will do that. Thank you, it's been a privilege.
Thank you. Okay. So, moving on to fourteen B, Facilities Update on the HVAC project, Corona Del Mar High School Sports Field. And back to Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mrs. Snell. As you know, we have a lot of projects getting going in the Facilities Department, and specifically wanted to update you this evening on our HVAC projects. We have six different schools that will be getting air conditioning this summer, and then there will be a whole series again next summer. In addition to the schools that are being air-conditioned, we have a school that is having its administration area changed, actually a couple, one changed with the HVAC project, one changed separate from that, and the CDM Sports Field project has begun. And so, Ms. Zeresny will be giving a report on that this evening.
Okay, good.
Good evening.
Yay.
Board members, Dr. Navarro, and Cabinet. Have a few of us left here. So, I'm gonna try to make this very brief, I know that you have a long evening ahead, so I'm gonna go through it quickly. If you have any questions at the end, I'd be happy to answer them. So, we are going to just focus on the air conditioning projects primarily, and then give you an update of the CDM Sports Fields project, and the schedule that we're working So, we packaged the projects, the summer projects, in a particular order and arrangement based on the location of the schools themselves. We also had input from contractors as to how many projects that they would be capable of bidding. So, we've structured these projects into four different bids, and you'll kind of see how that's done. The first project is the air conditioning projects at College Park, Davis, and Pomona. We have awarded that contract, we'll be ratifying that contract with you here shortly. When we go out to bid, we ask you for permission to advertise an award, and we always come back to you to ratify the contractor. So, this particular contractor is Scorpio, they also go by Air Masters. And this number that you see here, the total project cost, is construction, design, DSA, it's everything, including all the soft costs. And then, one thing I wanted to point out is, the costs for the projects, four of the six air conditioning projects, are significantly more because we went through a second design phase. So, when we had the original projects designed, they were already designed, DSA-approved, and we were ready to go. So, when we went from the roof-mounted to the ground-mounted, we essentially had to redesign everything and pay DSA for everything again. So, they're more expensive than our traditional projects, and that only includes, excuse me, that only includes College Park, Davis, Pomona, and Wilson. Kaiser and La Woodland, we had already made the decision to have ground-mounted. So, that's this current project, which we call it HVAC Project A. We have the contractor on board for that. The second project is HVAC projects at Kaiser and Woodland. And even though it's two schools, and it's a total project cost of, you know, close to seven point five million, this project is more expensive because Kaiser is essentially a middle school. So, the square footage that we're putting air conditioning is, it's probably, you know, twice as much as an elementary school, so the cost is a little bit more high, it's higher. And the contractor for this project is Los Angeles Air. So, for both of the bids, the air conditioning contractors have performed for us before. So, LA Air did our last round of projects, they were very successful. The first group, we know, was a little bit difficult because we had the flash flood. We could have done better at protecting the roofs, we know better now, not ever gonna happen again. So, I just included this so that you're familiar with how we're packaging our projects. This project here is for the admin fencing, the security fencing at Mariners and Newport Heights. They're close to each other, we packaged them together. The inspector who's working on this project is also the inspector that is redoing the gym at Enson. So, he's serving on all three of these projects. He was also the inspector at Newport Harbor High School for the Davidson Field. So, all familiar faces. This contractor, JRH, I have not worked with in the past. They came recommended, they passed all of our pre-qualification requirements, so we're happy with them coming in and bidding our project. The last project is the Wilson project, and Wilson is comprised, Wilson's the lucky school here, they get office fencing and air conditioning in one year. So, they get it all without phasing it, but we've packaged that one together. Because it is the entire school, air conditioning plus the other scope, we bid it as one project. And that contractor is NK S Construction, and again, they passed our pre-qualification process. So, what are they gonna look like? So, since we went to ground-mounted, we know that, you know, these are gonna be visible to some degree. The units themselves, I've personally stood next to these units on the roof of our engineer's office, they are, they're not loud, they end up being white noise. So, it's not gonna be disruptive to the classroom. They have grills on them to make sure that any fan coils are not exposed, that the kids can't stick their fingers in there or get hurt. So, we've taken those things into consideration. For the summer projects themselves, we are not doing any sort of enclosures, any fencing or enclosures. The intent is to do screening of some sort. So, this is a particular material, or plant material, that MNO likes to use. The picture, so, the picture on the left is my old house, and I was trying to cover a block wall, which you can't see the block wall. And then, the other picture on the right is Corona Del Mar High School, and there are a ton of conduit banks behind that silver sheen. So, it's not very dense, it looks pretty, it moves in the wind, and it doesn't drop very many leaves. So, maintenance, it's not a big maintenance issue. So, that's all I had on air conditioning. Corona Del Mar High School Sports Field, we are, as you know, you guys authorized us to move ahead with LPA for design of the two fields. So, we have, since we've seen you last, have gone through several meetings with the school site to talk about what exactly are there little things that need to be changed in the project? What are those things? How can we accommodate that? Really, there was striping. What field is gonna have dots for lacrosse, and what one's gonna have permanent striping? It wasn't anything, you know, too significant. We confirmed dimensions of the fields with the coaches. So, pretty much, not much has changed, some fence-opening locations, and otherwise, we end up with our two fields. The main field with the track field is going to be lined for football, soccer, and lacrosse. And then, the secondary field is going to have the markings for soccer and lacrosse primarily. And then, we're just simply putting hatching on the lines, on the ends of the lines for football. Football didn't want full lines, they didn't want full numbers, they just wanted the hatching. So, we're able to accommodate that. The only other thing that was significant that was requested from the site was to put taller fencing around the shot put area. So, we typically would have six feet or four feet at the track, we're doing ten feet enclosure around that area. That was just a safety concern, so we were able to get that into the design. Let's see here.
Is that, you mean the fence between the football area?
So, over here where the discus is, there's gonna end up being fencing along here that's ten feet, go up to the trees off of Vista Del Oro, back towards the track, and then kind of this U-shape back over to the other fence.
And that's all ten foot?
Yes.
But the rest of the fencing is not?
So, perimeter fencing for the facilities themselves is ten foot, with the one-inch link, the mesh that we've been doing at all the other schools. There is a four-foot fence that goes around the track to keep spectators off the track. There'll be little gates, little three-foot gates that you can go in and open if you want to, but it's primarily to keep everybody off the track during an event. But there'll be access points.
Kind of like a stancious that way.
Yep, exactly. And so is Mesa.
Mesa, yeah.
Okay, so, where are we in the schedule? We are, we have approved, that drawing that you were just looking at is considered schematic design, where they verify everything fits, they get all the particulars of what we've asked them to do. The next phase is design development, where they're really looking at the elevations, and how can we get ADA accessibility to a particular area? Do we have to have infill? Are we removing soil? You know, what are all those different particulars? So, we've authorized LPA to move forward. We had a kickoff meeting on May 14th, and then, these are just all the other phases. District review of design development, us approving that design development, and then kicking off the construction document phase, which is where all the details come into play, that ends up being the set of documents that gets submitted to DSA. But we'll have an incremental review of fifty percent, so we expect in September that we would be reviewing those documents. And because we are moving towards having a project management firm come in and assist, we'll be better suited for reviewing those documents. And then, we anticipate on submitting to DSA in November. And, you know, DSA's been really good, they have really met timelines, you know, pretty efficiently, so we don't get to blame them too much for lagging anymore. They're really stepping up to the plate, and with electronic design review, it's sped things up tremendously. So, we expect to start construction June 1st of 2019.
Okay. Chugga, chugga, chugga.
And then, this plan is just showing you other elements that we're trying to improve. The purple clouded area is just the pathways that we're gonna make sure that we have lit from the back parking lot to encourage that thoroughfare. So, people are really parking in our parking lots. And then, the blue circle is just, we're doing soil boring, so where we go thirty feet deep, and we see how quickly the water drains. So, we can know what kind of soil conditions we're dealing with. So, that's some outstanding items, and that's all I had.
Thank you. That is great, that is great. We have a couple of questions here, but that is, that's wonderful. It's, we're moving forward.
Yep.
Yes. Ms. Flora?
Yeah, thank you. I was able to participate in the meeting on the 14th, and, or, could you talk to the Board about the process by which we're keeping everybody off the streets and out of our parking lots? The construction, when we start construction, there was a lot of concern about making sure that they're not taking our parking slots, and where are they parking and offloading, and so, and then, talking about the exterior fencing and where the entrances are going to be for that secondary field?
So, when we bid the project, we will identify an area for the contractor, for his lay-down area. And so, likely what's going to happen is, we're gonna let them take use of this area here, since it's really, it's part of the project, we're not making improvements to that area, but it's going to be the access, so they're gonna come off of Vista Del Oro, and they're gonna come in with the road that was used to build the theater and the enclave off that same location. So, we're expecting we would give them a pretty large chunk here, so that they could have all their construction vehicles onsite, or we're gonna encourage them to park somewhere else. Park at South Coast Plaza, park somewhere else, and in Carpool Inn. The city was concerned with that, and we told the city that we would, you know, communicate with them, we'll also communicate with the church and the school to let them know when our construction's happening, which we've done every time we've done a project there. And so, the meeting that we had, I missed that piece, the meeting that we had last week was with the CDM Working Group Committee. So, you made a commitment to, in our communication policy, to make sure that we're keeping them involved. So, we actually presented this plan to them, and a few of them are here, I'm sure they can speak to it. Really, I had no action item out of that meeting. So, it went well.
That's good.
I was like, I didn't get anything to do. So, it went very well, I appreciate them participating, and, you know, making sure that we're presenting and building what we said we were building.
Great, great. Any more questions?
I'll say nothing.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
We have no action items either.
Yay. We're doing something right.
I do have a question about Newport Heights, and that's only, what's happening with the...
I can speak to that.
The Newport, the...
City.
The city and that horrible island that is in the middle, that you have to having hang a U-turn to get even into the parking lot? Are we working with that?
So, the city just completed their review, their study.
Okay.
It's online now. When we had our meeting last week, Tony Bryan from Public Works was here, and so, he gave Tim Marsh and I a link to it, so we're gonna go review that. Once we review their study, then we can move forward with the parking lot redesign at Newport Heights. So, I haven't analyzed it yet, they've just completed it and posted it. It took them longer, because they were supposed to complete it in March, it took them longer because some of the residents were upset that their area wasn't included in the study, so they had to go back and expand the study. So, they got so far along down, and then, they said, "Well, why not our area?" So, they went back and they expanded the study area.
Okay. Good.
Yes, we would.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Report on the Local Control and Accountability Plan and the 2018-19 Budget. Mr. Trader, do we start with you? No, we start with...
Elsie.
Okay.
The Gailey Foundation.
The Gailey Foundation. Okay.
Good for you.
Good for you. It looks like John Drake is taking over again.
There we go.
Well, let's make sure. Okay. Okay. I know, the moment you've all been waiting for, I've said it again, but I mean it, this time it's true. Tonight, we are presenting jointly the first time ever. Mr. Trader and I decided that we really wanted to demonstrate how closely aligned the local control accountability plan and the budget are. We've worked hand in hand for years now, but especially since January, really trying to make sure that all of our actions and services and dollars are in alignment. And I think you can tell that we're really in alignment.
I was going to say.
Thank you.
Did you plan that?
No, he chose that exquisite shade of pink. So, but we're going to get started and we're really thrilled. President Snell and Superintendent Navarro and members of the, the board and cabinet and guests. We have a 302-page document to present to you this evening. We're very proud of it. And we, we're not going to read every page to you, but we want to make sure we provide some context for you around this plan.
Oh darn.
And then also dig into some of the components and then show you where you can find it and some of the support documents that we've provided. So what is the LCAP? It's the Local Control and Accountability Plan. It's a three-year plan and it's a requirement of all districts in the state. And what it does is explain our goals for all students as well as the outcomes we expect to see. And then the actions and services designed to meet those state priorities with a particular emphasis on supporting students in the quote, "unduplicated count." And so what does that mean? Well, in most districts, there's certain funding that comes through for the, the schools and the district as a whole. And that funding, what we call our general fund, is called base funding. And it's based on the number of students in the district, all of them. And then most districts also get some supplemental funding. And that's additional funding based on the number of students who are part of specific groups. English learners, low-income students, foster youth, and homeless. And for the dollars, what they do is they use an unduplicated count. And what that means is that each student only counts one time, even if that student might be represented in all four of those groups. So that unduplicated count is then used to generate base funds as well as supplemental funds for each of the students in this group. Now, what's different for our district is we're a community-funded or basic aid district, so we don't get these additional funds. However, we are held to the same expectations in terms of how we're going to support expenditures for all of our students and in particular, the neediest students just mentioned. And our plan has to address eight state priorities, and those are listed here. And our plan does address eight of, all of the priorities, even though, and we do have eight goals, but we don't have one goal per priority. Some of the priorities are put together in certain goals because we have an eighth goal for our signature academies and that's not listed here. But we are definitely covering all of the state priorities. So our goals don't change for the three years and we really tightened those up a couple of years ago. You may remember that at one point we had over 28 goals and we consolidated them into eight common sense goals. And so those are the ones you see before you. And the last major change we had was with Goal One. In the original LCAP, we had English Language Arts as a standalone goal, but we updated it to include English Language Development in recognition of the state framework. Talking about how we are supposed to provide English Language Arts and English Language Development in tandem, side by side. So each of our goals addresses the content areas in Goals One, Two, and Three. The broad courses study you see includes a number of different content areas. Goal Four is about school climate and student engagement. Goal Five is about parent involvement. Number Six is basic services, which was really designed to address the Williams requirements of instructional materials, appropriately assigned teachers, and facilities. We've also added some components this year around safety. We felt like that was the right place to put it and we felt like this was the right time to make those additions. Also about college and career readiness, we want to prepare all of our students to be successful in whatever they choose, both college and career. And then finally, our goal that's unique to our district around signature academies. So the LCAP template is prescribed to us by the state and it has certain requirements. You can see them outlined here in the different colors and I've also included the page numbers. The plan summary is the parent-friendly summary of the plan. And I say parent-friendly summary in loose terms. It has certain requirements that come from the state. And of course, we certainly would like for it to be shorter than it is, but there are certain things that we must address. So we try to use as parent-friendly language as possible. We also, wherever possible, define every acronym. So instead of just using letters like ELA or ELD, we will spell out English Language Arts and English Language Development. We also include a 2017-18 annual update. Those are required in the LCAP. And that is an update on our goals and the actions and services, the outcomes and expenditures. So you see columns that say, we said we would do this, and then here is what happened. And then we said we would spend this dollar amount and to the best of our knowledge, right now, here is what happened. Because you'll also notice it's about estimated actuals. We haven't closed the book on this year and we've been working on the annual update since January. So we really try and, and keep an eye on the expenditures and at this point, some things we know and they've been expended and are out the door. And other things, we're still working on saying, you know, when will the, the books close? We also describe our stakeholder engagement. We describe who gave input, how, and when. And we've had a number of different committees from schools, different groups, stakeholder groups weigh in. Our district English learner advisory committee, our superintendent's parent advisory committee, those two are required. But we have pages of, of the dates and locations that those meetings took place. And then you'll see in the green, we have the three years of goals, I'm sorry, actions and services, 1718, 1819, and 1920. And that again includes the expected outcomes, our actions, services, and budgeted expenditures. What's different in this current LCAP, they made a change to last LCAP. It used to be a rolling three-year plan coming forward. And now we've preserved 1718 and then we have 1819 and 1920 where we can make additions and changes. Lastly, a description of increased or improved services. That's the place where most districts who get the extra money, and us too, because we set aside those funds, we explain all the things that we targeted toward those efforts and, and what, how it really is an increased or improved service. You don't necessarily need to buy more. It may be that you're improving what you're doing. And so often, we'll describe that. You'll also notice that we had to retain last year's essays. So they'll look very similar because many of the things we're doing, we are continuing. You don't change every single thing you do from year to year. So for the annual update, one of the big questions you have is, well, where is the data? And you can find the data in a number of ways, but if you go to our district website and you look for the California School Dashboard, you can find a link there. Anyone can also find the dashboard on the California Department of Education website. The California School Dashboard looks like that. And in the fall, you'll see us come back again and we'll provide a report on the newly released dashboard. Because even though we have to present the LCAP now, they don't release the new dashboard until the fall. That's just the way. So one of the things about the dashboard is that it is color-coded pies. And then the pies also are a certain amount of fullness. So that even if you are not able to see color, you can see how full the pie is. And so what you're always hoping for is to be in green or blue. Yellow is the mid-range and in orange or red, those are the lower levels of performance. And anything that's in orange and red, you have to address in your LCAP. Now, you don't see any orange and red here, but if you were to click on some of those links and drill down, you may see specific student groups that may be in orange and red. And so we also address that in our LCAP. Now, some of the things that you need to know about the student groups, and of course, we care about every single student group. But one of the requirements around the subgroup size is depending on the metric, they may be looking to as few as 30 students. So you could see that with a very small group, if you have a, a small fluctuation in the number of students who are enrolled or who leave, especially with suspension, as is the case with us, then you can see a big, a big fluctuation. So stakeholder input. We, we, we do all of the required stakeholder input and then we continue to reach out to even more. So we met with CTA, or sorry, CSEA in March and we met with NMFT. We also meet with our school site leaders. There are different staffs that have weighed in and classified staffs. The Community Advisory Committee, which is our special ed representatives. Our DLAC, our district English learner advisory committee. Our English learner advisory committees at a number of schools participated. The LCAP survey was available from February to March. And so that was available for students, parents. And I'll get to the LCAP survey in a bit. NMFT in April. We had PTAs and PFOs participate. School site councils. We really tried to make an effort to get more student voice this year. Site leadership teams, staff, student advisory committee, ASB. So we wanted to make sure that we really continued to do this robust outreach and always looking for more student voice in particular. The stakeholder input forums, we redesign each year, but really what we focused on this year was just telling us about your reality. In years past, we asked them to act, we asked them to respond to different goals. This year, we just said, tell us what are some of the strengths and what are some of the challenges? And so we used more of that open-ended forum to, to see what we were noticing from the schools. The February through March survey was also conducted through a new vendor this year and that was through Hanover Research. We're very, very pleased with them. Not that we weren't pleased with our prior survey support. We just hadn't seen the reports that Hanover has produced for other districts and we really felt like that kind of report was what we were looking for. And this report is posted to the website. That's the survey analysis. And what they were able to do was look at our survey responses over three years and then help us redesign some of the questions and then launch our survey online. I will let you know that through the findings, one of the things we've learned is that we want to have our survey earlier in the year and we want to have it at a set time. So everybody knows when it's going to be and to prepare because it's only online. And that will be January of next year. So the day we get back from winter break, well ahead of the testing time, it'll be a chance for us to increase our student responses and for us to also make sure that everybody knows about the survey. So for survey participation, you'll notice that we went from very right-hand side 1516, we had 3,581 total responses. 1617, we had 5,452 total responses. And in 1718, we had 7,334. So again, the survey window will adjust and we'll have more time to make sure everybody knows about it. And while we are very happy with the increase, it's, it's a large increase in participation, we're not satisfied. We definitely want more student response. We have about 10,000 students who could have responded, so we really want to see us closer to that target number. And of course, we always want more parent and guardian response. So we'll be working again with our PTAs and our PFOs and with DLAC to make sure that everyone understands the survey's open and how to take it. And also making sure that the sites are equipped to support families who may need additional assistance with online access. So where can you find the LCAP? Well, if you go to the Newport Mesa webpage and you just put in the letters LCAP, you'll get to my page. And it has some very generic explanation about the LCAP. And at the top, we've left questions and additional input and the, the email address that anyone can, can email to. And then we have some resources that we think are really strong from PTA in both English and Spanish. And then additionally, this is a small shot, but it shows you the whole page. Underneath the LCAP resources down below, you have all of the 2018-19 LCAP documents, the current draft, and then some additional shortened documents in English and Spanish that will show you at a glance the things that we are, we are doing in our actions and services. And then below that, you have our 1718 documents. So you can see what we did prior year. And then below that, you have the previous versions of all of the LCAPs. You can go back in time and see what we started with. So last year, I, I, as, as my LCAP grew and grew, I learned that it was really difficult for people to follow along in the multi-page document. So we created a shortened document. So the 1718 document is four pages with all eight goals. And we really tried to stick to my boss's mantra of creating a one-pager, but there's absolutely no way I could make a one-pager on this. So did the best we could.
Not with font we could read.
No, it was, it's a lot. So the 1819 LCAP, we, we made it look a little different, different font and different color, but still the same layout. And the, the basic thing I would like for people to know about this is that we, we maintained so many actions and services. If there was no change, then you'll see the, the type in regular font. If there was an adjustment of some kind, we created it just italics. So it would show that something was modified. And then the asterisk represents something that is partly or wholly funded through our LCFF reservation. The money we set aside to, for, for LCFF purposes. So I'm not going to read every single thing that we're doing to you, but, and it is, it is a lot. But we're just very proud of some of the things that we have done on behalf of all of our students and especially our students who have the greatest need. And some of the things we're particularly proud of are the purchases and the adoption processes we've implemented in materials. English Language Arts, English Language Development. You'll see later in math, and I know there's a presentation later today. As well as the ongoing support we're providing with personel, additional resources on campuses, and addition of some much-needed professional development. Some of the parent survey responses and the community survey let us know that there was really a need for more support in the area of English Language Development and language in general. So we, we learned through experience this year at the elementary level. Our Moonlight Series for math was particularly successful and we want to replicate that in English Language Arts and English Language Development. The other thing I want to call your attention to down below for the all-grade levels. You recently had a presentation from our special ed friends about the work that they're doing with inclusive practices. And we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. You don't see our students with disabilities called out very often, or excuse me, our students with IEPs. But we, we really wanted to make sure that you, you all know that our kids are alongside their general education peers. And that is how we're supporting our students. And we're providing additional resources where needed. So you will see that throughout all of the different content areas. It's a, it's a large emphasis for us. Same thing for science, technology, engineering, and math. We are continuing to move along with the adoptions and to, also to provide extra access to our Summer Engineering Academy. We're really proud of that enrichment opportunity in the summer. And last year, we were able to expand the transportation as well as the size of the program. We wanted to make sure that students from all far reaches of our district could, could go there. And then in secondary, you'll see a lot of the additions around our math adoptions and some additional components of math performance tasks. And then our teachers on special assignment as well as some coaches. We're still going to continue having that, but we're also going to arm them with additional support on focusing on English learners. So we're going to maintain, but we're going to increase services. And then lastly, down below, we'll have the inclusive practices for our students and make sure that we're also expanding our Chromebook distribution in the Newport, I'm sorry, in the Corona Del Mar zone. So anyone can see, we're doing a lot. We've made some modifications. We're continuing to pilot and adopt material as it becomes available in accordance with when it's released by the State Board of Education. And, and we look at what is on the list and we make decisions for ourselves as a district about what, if, what is available is the best that is out there. And, and then we go through a lengthy process to go through adoption and then subsequent implementation. And we really do look at that as a three-year cycle from start to, to finish on once we adopt. I also want to make sure you note that on school climate and student engagement, we had a tragedy mid-year. And part of our response as a district was to hire challenge success to come and work with our families and work with our schools. And we will continue to provide that as needed. Obviously, it wasn't in the last plan, but we make adaptations and so we continue with that moving forward. Then we also have some additional staffing to coordinator in student services and additional school psychologists. So the, the LCAP is, is a live, living document as much as possible. And I can already tell you there's things I'm working on for next year. So, but we're, we're trying to be responsive to all of the needs. In parent involvement, on the federal side, parent involvement is now being called parent and family engagement. And I would have changed our goal, but we're not changing our goal for another two years. So if you, when you see that we have a federal document, the Local Educational Agency Plan, you'll note that it's called family, parent and family engagement. And we really are talking about the same thing here. We'll make the adjustment in language later. You'll notice on number six, basic services and operations, that's where we have, again, those Williams requirements. But you'll notice that the first bullet, we're going to augment existing safety and emergency policies, procedures, and practices. That again is one of the things that we're doing around safety. You don't necessarily see a dollar amount tied to that, but it's a personal, personal investment, time in training and time that we've already accounted for, but something that we're bringing to the surface. Also, you'll notice that we're adding the enhanced perimeter fencing to promote safety and controlled access to campus, as Ara had mentioned. Now, for Goal Seven, we had to go to a nine-point font because there are so many things happening there. We're just really proud that, we, we feel like we are supporting our academics at all grade levels. And then college and career readiness, the metrics for those is really a secondary metric. So that's why you see many things listed there as a secondary action and service. But really, we do believe that by building a strong core in English Language Arts, math, history, science, music, that at the elementary levels, that we are getting kids college and career ready. So one of the, the changes that we are making, if you'll notice, the, the last bullet in the top section, we've moved the instructional coaches. When we originally conceived of the When we originally conceived of the coaches, they were for math, English, science, and history, and they were content-specific to bring in the common core. Well, we've been bringing in the common core for a while, and what we're doing now is shifting to looking at our instructional practice, how we're designing our lessons, how we're engaging students, and how in particular, we're making sure we're engaging our English learners. So that's, we've always had them, we're just shifting the location, and then we're also moving the funds. And lastly, of course, our signature academies, one of the things that we're recognizing is that our academies and our career tech ed pathways have come together and have been synonymous for quite a while. We want to make sure that we're identifying properly which things are career tech ed pathways and which things are standalone academies. So all of those things are listed here. So if anybody doesn't want to read all 302 pages, then you can look for the four-page document. As I mentioned before, we're going to have an LCAP addendum. You don't see it now, you'll see it later in the summer, and that is to cover our federal funds. It will look very different than the LCAP. The template is very different, and it doesn't ask for the same kind of dollar delineation. What it asks for is more about what we plan, because most of the dollars are actually in our local control accountability plan. So the addendum supplements that and talks about specifically some of the requirements under the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. That is also something that I will be spearheading and will bring back to you in August. And the consolidated application, that is the formal application that we make to the state for the federal funds each year, and then mid-year, we do a report of expenditure. So you put all those three components together, and that fits under the requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act and as our district plan. So again, you can find the LCAP on our website. If you just type in the letters L-C-A-P, you'll see it there. There may be some adjustments to the LCAP between now and next week. If anybody finds a typo, please let me know. And we'll make some small adjustments and make sure you know what they are. Okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over to my partner in not crime.
That was really great. This is a great, great document. I think we're just all kind of blown away by this document since we started this. It just tells everything we're doing. It's right there and measures it, and it's wonderful. You're the LCAP queen.
It's daunting, but readable.
I mean, you've made it so that even if you don't speak educationese, you can understand what's going on. You may get tired halfway through it and go, oh, my gosh. But if you power through it, you know what's going on in our district. It's about as transparent a document as we could have, except for the one we're going to hear now.
Okay, Mrs. Flor has a quick question.
Yeah, and it's really, it's just a comment, and again, Mrs. Gail, you did a phenomenal job.
As usual, yeah.
Yeah, as usual, it's just fabulous. I just want to pay particular attention to item seven, which is the college and career readiness. My only concern is there appears to be a lot of bullets for college and very few for career readiness. I know we mentioned Naviance, we mentioned multiple career pathways and industry sectors, we talk about the college night, but I hope that that can be expanded because it's not just going to college. It may be also a certificate program in a, like a, you know, Universal Technology Institute for cars or whatever it is. I just want, I want, I want a little bit more emphasis on what we're really doing in terms of career and technical, you know, the career portion. So that's just my, that's just my.
We will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, it's good to be with you tonight. It's interesting, in the budget, there's a very particular carve-out, and you see that in the LCAP report. And if we were an LCFF district, we're community-funded, but if we were an LCFF district, this is kind of the pieces of funding that you would see that we would get. We'd get a base grant and then a grade span adjustment and supplemental grant and concentration grant, maybe some targeted grants, and then home-to-school transportation. Now, you don't get any of that, but you do get property tax. And so you can see on the left-hand side of that screen, the value of the property tax, and you can see then also the value of what we'd get under an LCFF model. And that's a great compliment to this community, the value that this community generates. It's absolutely a great testament to what this community does. So, but looking on the particular parts there, you'll see the base grant, we'd get 163.7 million, and a grade span adjustment, 6.1 million. But then you come to that supplemental grant, and take a look at that supplemental grant. That is 16.2 million, and that is the piece that is particularly carved out and put in the LCAP, and that is the piece that is meant to go to what's called the unduplicated pupil or those who are economically disadvantaged, foster youth, and English learners. And so that's the piece that we watch very carefully and we document very carefully. And we do that, and you might hear, and this is important, you know, because you may hear sometime what's called the minimum proportionality requirement. And this is critical that we meet this requirement. It's required by the state, and the way it's calculated is we take what's called our supplemental grant, and that's a calculation that's done, and again, remember, you don't gain money for this. But we take this supplemental grant, and that's worth 16.2 million dollars, and you divide that by, again, what you're, what we would get for the base grant and the grade span adjustment, that's 169 million, and you come up with the percentage. And that percent, that percent, 9.53 percent, that's the percent that we need to be spending on the unduplicated pupil over and above what all other students receive. So that's a critical thing. Now, that doesn't mean, though, that we always have to spend more money. I particularly heard Vanessa say that we don't have to spend more money, and that's really not the goal, because, you know, these funds are not restricted, they're targeted. And so we have a lot of, how do you say, flexibility on utilizing the dollars and improving services. And sometimes that doesn't cost money to improve services. And so anyways, I just want to tell you how great it's been to work with Vanessa. She is absolutely a team player. I don't think ed services and fiscal have been any more connected and on the same page than they ever have been than now. And so it's really just been absolutely terrific. And when you think about transparency, you know, in the old days, you might have a budget committee, and there might be five or six people on that committee, and they'd spend time on the budget and that kind of thing. But there was never this connection between the dollars and actually, actual actions and services that you see in the LCAP. And we're moving there as quickly as we can. In fact, I think you'll see some dramatic changes in our budget book in the future where we'll be much more, it'll be much more of a companion to the LCAP report. And so anyways, it's really important for us to be transparent, because every action and service for all students, but particularly those in that supplemental group, the unduplicated pupil is called out in the LCAP, and you'll see that. And you've seen how Vanessa does extensive, extensive community outreach. This is absolutely wonderful that we get this kind of feedback in the budgeting process. And then you've also, you know, in terms of when we do this, we also call out the variances. You'll see that in the, what's it called, the update. And then we describe general fund expenditures that are not included in the LCAPs, which means essentially, the LCAP includes your entire general fund budget. And then in 1920, you're going to look forward to a new parent budget overview. And we're, the state's helping us with some things there to put into that, but we want to be right on the, on the cutting edge there, making that transparent for parents. And so let's talk about then what's impacting us in terms of the money. And so if you think about what drives our budget, and it's really property taxes, the values of property here within the district. And this has been an absolutely wonderful streak, winning streak in terms of returns year over year. And this year, we're going to experience a 7% increase in property tax revenue compared to the previous year. That's outstanding. That really is, that's absolutely wonderful. However, that's not going to last. And so we've been really conservative on the out-years. Everything we read, from Chapman University to this study here that was published in the Wall Street Journal Survey of Economists about home values, is the trend is down in the out-years. And so we are being conservative. In your budget year in 1819, we have predicted a 4.3% growth in property values. Now, that's a, that's a still growing and still a pretty healthy number, but it's down from the 7% that we experienced this year. And that's important, because we have to be in the right ballpark on property values. We cannot be in the wrong ballpark. That would be, that would be really bad for us. And so part of what's happening here, if you look at this blue line here, this is our revenue line. That's a wonderful line. Isn't that great? We want this line, we want to see this all the time. But the only problem is, is we got this other line, our expense line. And so when you see this, these two lines, you don't ever want them to touch. Never should they ever touch. And we want the space between them to be a reasonable space between them. And you can see it's getting tighter and tighter as we go, and we're watching that. We're watching that, but this tells you that we're living within our means, and you're doing a lot. You're doing an awful lot. You're going to spend $27 million this summer. It's going to be a bonanza in terms of air conditioning and construction that's going on out of the sites. And so you're pushing, that's probably not the right word, but you're, the organization's being pushed to move forward on these priorities in a pretty heavy way, and we're moving as quickly as we can. Now, one of the problems or one of the challenges that we're going to have here is pensions. Employers are charged for CalSTRS and CALPERS a percent based on salary. And you can see from these lines here, these are employer pension rates for CALPERS. CALPERS is in the red, CalSTRS is in the blue. And you see how these rates have gone up dramatically. And this, this is, take note, this is during an expansion in our economy, and these rates are going up like this. And yes, the pension systems are digging themselves out of a hole, and I suppose the first rule is when digging yourself out of a hole is to stop digging, and they're trying to do that. But this is concerning. This is concerning for us especially, because if the economy slows or a recession happens, good grief, what are these rates going to do? And so this is probably something, a problem is bigger than us, but you as being elected officials should know, this is a, this is a problem that needs to be addressed, probably at the state level. And part of this issue is, is you can see on the blue lines, the bar's going up, that's the total cost. But that red line, this is the red, the red line is the one that is most concerning. That red line tells you that in 1314, pension costs were about 5% of our total budget. In 2021, pension costs are predicted to be of almost 12% of our budget. So pension costs are taking a larger bite out of the pie, so to speak. So something else has to give, and that's a problem for us. It's a problem, and I hope that, you know, we can get that message across to the state. But in the, you're still maintaining a deliberate and responsible reserve. You can see here in 1718, we're predicted to reduce that reserve somewhat because of the tremendous amount of work in facilities and in adoptions that we've been doing. And so this is still a responsible reserve, and it's appropriate to take it down somewhat to move forward on your priorities. However, so, but when we look at the budget, it's prudent, we anticipate some uncertainty, we predicted that, we put that in our assumptions, we've incorporated your district priorities, and we're consistent with the local control accountability plan. And we have to say that the district is solvent and moving forward. So we can't end that without saying that. And so consequently, we recommend the budget to you, and we look forward to any feedback that you might have between now and the time that we adopted at our next meeting. So thank you so much for your time.
See, I thought, Mr. Treter, you would say, we're in the pink.
Yeah.
Oh, with your tie. Okay, we have some questions. Okay, Ms. Metoyer.
Has the employee contributions to the pension flattened yet? I think it was this year, hasn't it? The employee contribution increased, the states, everybody's contribution to the pensions increased, but I know that the employees stopped while ours kept going and have, the employees in both groups stopped yet?
On the CALPERS side, on the classified side, they have remained somewhat fixed. However, it is calculated on 50% of the normal cost, so there, the employees' costs could go up somewhat, so depending on how those calculations come out. So that could, that could move. On the CALSTRS side, their rates are going up on the employee side somewhat. But I'm not sure on the out-years how far they're projected to go on.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Yelsey.
Yeah, I want to thank you both. This is a great presentation for you to do this together, and I love the pink. I think you guys look great. And, you know, Vanessa, I want to thank you for taking each of us through, some by small groups, some individually. I know you did it a lot of times. You always have a smile on your face when you're doing that, and it's obvious you love it, and you make us love it by just the energy in the room, so thank you for that. And the budget book, we had it delivered to our houses on Friday, and my husband says to me, why are you getting the book? Why aren't you getting it electronically? And I said, because I like to sit on the couch and read it and hold it. It's like a good book you want to read, and it's true.
We do read it.
It does tell the story of our district. So I just really appreciate the way you present this to us and what you give to evaluate how we're doing, and I appreciate that we are moving forward and are solvent. Thank you.
Very appreciative. Thank you. Ms. Flor.
Again, I commend both of you. I would hope that we can have the PowerPoints, these PowerPoints.
Those PowerPoints are great.
They're fabulous, and I know that in the, with the new, the new agenda online, you can embed the PowerPoints into the LC, I mean, the reason we know that is because we attended CSBA and the annual conference, the delegate assembly, and the actual PowerPoints are embedded, they're on the agenda online, and you just click and you get the PowerPoints. And so that would be really helpful, and I think that it's really helpful for the public to be able to see them while you're talking through, but sometimes they just want to read, you know, read them. So, and they were fabulous, again. I do have a question about the election. I couldn't find it, and maybe I'm just blind and didn't read through. Did you find it? I was just.
Cost of the election?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's, have we gotten an actual cost because it's actually four separate elections, because there's, well, we have five elections that we have to pay for this year. Is that correct? And so did, are they, I know, well, it's in here, but it's more than last year, or two years ago. So I just wanted to get some conversations about, and just if we can have, just, not now, but, you know, in the future, at the next meeting to talk about the various, because we, it was indicated to us that in terms of candidates and the costs would be, go down, would go down, but it appears that it's going up.
We'll be prepared for that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Bravo.
Yes, great. Thank you. No? Yeah.
I'm going to be leaving around now. Yes, it does. I'm going to be leaving around now, but I just wanted to thank you guys again for the great times this year. My successor, I'm working on making sure that he is as dedicated, or hopefully more so, than I was.
Thank you.
Just thanks a lot. I love you guys. It's been great. See you guys later.
Thank you. We're going to miss you.
And thank your mom for stepping up there and actually being there all the time. Thank you.
Really. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings?
So you can open the public hearing?
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing 15A, Local Control and Accountability Plan LCAP. So I'm opening the public hearing.
And you have one card here.
Oops, sorry.
One card here.
Okay, this is on LCAP. Okay, and I have a speaker, Erica Roberts. Okay, and I have a speaker, Erica Roberts.
This is on 14C.
We don't have 14C speaking, just a comment.
Oh, the public hearing is on the LCAP and the All Funds Final Budget. Those are the two things you can speak on here.
There were several, I could speak twice, but
Oh, this is 15, okay. Go ahead.
So I do speak twice?
Nope, once. 14.
Well, it's two different hearings.
That's right.
Right, she's got two cards and one for A, which is LCAP. And then when you have the public hearing for the All Funds, she could speak, she could speak to 14, no, 15B. There's no comment, public comment on reports. That's why we have the public hearing section.
It's 15, not 14.
So 15, you're speaking on the LCAP right now. Okay.
Okay, good evening, members of the board and valued community members. My name is Erica Roberts. I'm a school site council. My school's foundation, a very active mom of four children. I care about their educational and emotional experience in this district. I want to thank Vanessa Galen and Jeff Trader for the LCAP explanation. I want to share with you my experience. When I first joined school site council, I wanted to educate myself and my responsibilities in the LCAP. It stands for Local Controlled Accountability. Local, control, and accountability. And that sounded great. Through my journey and interest, I spent time understanding the goals of the LCAP in the past and now with this new one put up. I think it is the responsibility of this district to make sure that parents understand how valuable and important it is to their community. This takes better communication and best practices on getting surveys out. There is a document in the LCAP and it says 2% of parent feedback of the 1,574 responses, and some schools only had 1%. So we went up about 251 responses in the district. I think we can do more. Newport County District is locally funded. We are not like other districts. 80% of the money that pays for salaries, classroom maintenance, cars, gas, technology, curriculum, lawsuits, bonuses, and sometimes huge financial mistakes. This is all paid for with our hard-earned tax-paying dollar. As such, it feels that LCAP isn't understood by parents to be as serious as it should be. We paid Hanover $60,000 to help with the LCAP survey, and the numbers only went up a couple hundred for parents and teachers. Again, it went up from 1,323 to 1,574. So here is some free advice from me. If you please send out the LCAP in the future through principals that we know and PTA leaders that we trust, you will get more responses than sending them out through a secretary that nobody knows. Parents are overwhelmed and will just hit delete, and this is a fact. When it comes from a principal, parents will open it. The district must do a better job of communicating. People I talked to at our schools in leadership positions don't know about the LCAP or what it really does. I saw it on school site council and I had to explain it because I looked into it. So if you look at the results within that 300-page document, which I printed it all out, the most improvement that they were looking for is people aren't really happy with the facilities. The fields looked fine, but the schools and some other things are not going great. Teachers want more planning time. If you look on the responses, it's like 40%. It's not good. And remember, we're in a curriculum change and that takes a lot for teachers. Parents desperately want our classroom sizes reduced. We talked about that last time. Dr. Navarro did a presentation saying the average was 28, but what I'm finding is that classrooms are 36, 35 with new curriculum. And we want better mental health for our kids. If these percentages were test scores, we would be failing. Please put our children and teachers first by working together and informing parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Real quickly, I just want to express that Hanover contract is not only for the survey. The Hanover contract, the survey was only a piece of that. They've done several research projects for us. And so I don't want it to be misconstrued, that a survey cost us $60,000. It did not cost us $60,000. That was one part of several projects, projects that they've worked with the district on.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other speakers? I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. For that one? 15B.
For 15A or 15B?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. We're getting to you. Okay, so now I'm going to open the public hearing for 15B, which is the 2018-19 All Funds Final Budget. It's open. Okay. And so I, only one card? That's not you.
No, I think he's on public comment.
Oh, public comment.
Yeah, which we haven't gotten to yet.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Erica Roberts.
So we're on 15B, just to clarify.
Exactly.
Sure, I wasn't quite ready. I'm sorry. Again, my name is Erica Roberts and I'm talking about 15B. Basically, Dr. Navarro, you had your staff give a presentation a few weeks ago on how we compare to other districts and what the average classroom sizes were. You said it was 28. The data from this document that Martha gave to me shows that the numbers are very different. Hopefully you all have this. But the numbers you presented were from 2015 and they were presented at the 2018 meeting. We don't need to go to such extents to do these presentations. This document from Martha shows that what the classroom sizes really are right now. TK has like 15 and 13 kids, so that will affect the classroom size in the range or average. I think we need to take a good, hard look at what we are doing to teachers and kids and families, and the LCAP is our document. The title says it is locally controlled and it's for accountability. We want more say in how our money is being spent. We want supplements like MobiMax that Anderson is using, it's one of the best-performing schools, to be used across the district and paid for with our money. We want classroom sizes to have 25 kids in the class or less. Anderson has 18 kids and 20 kids in sixth grade. Compare that to College Park in this document. One teacher in sixth grade has 38 students in her room. I don't know many teachers who can take an additional 20 students, 18 plus the 20, and be highly effective in the learning process without being stressed out. When you have 38, 36, and 35 children in elementary, you can't even get to know them. You barely are staying afloat. I implore you to take a good, hard look at how we load the classrooms for 2018-19 school year. Martha, you were told that the teachers at Mariners didn't want another sixth-grade teacher, and that's why the classes were at 35. This is a false statement. I wish that one of you had talked to them. They did want another teacher, but it wasn't given. They got an aide instead if they wanted it. These teachers are teaching in non-air-conditioned rooms, implementing two new programs with little time to team plan. You're going to burn teachers out. Our kids deserve better. We have the money. It's our money. Over $300 million, and we need to stop spending it on lawsuits and frivolous things like bonuses. Put the money back into the classrooms. And if you want to give anyone a raise, it should be the teachers over at College Park who have 20 more students per year in one classroom than their professional peers at Anderson, who can with 18 and 20 kids. The teachers are doing all the heavy lifting. Over $300 million in our budget and our facilities are not great. We need more mental health counselors, psychologists, time for teachers to plan and dig into this new curriculum that they've been given for two, language art and math. We would like a huge improvement with equity, transparency, and parent communication. After all, it is the job of the school board. I hope that we can improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I have another speaker, Ashley Anderson.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the LCAP and the budget overview. It was really helpful and informative. I love the quote that was inside that said, "The budget is not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and our aspirations." That was beautiful. "A majority of our budget goes to educators, which is as it should be. They directly impact and instruct our students, our first priority. Yet, we currently have a district divided. There are families who can afford to supplement their local schools with foundations and donations to buy essentials like additional staffing, services, and supplies. And there are other families with less income, soaring rents, yet a hopeful belief that their local school is doing its very best for their students. I believe that we can and we should do more to create equal access to exceptional public school education. Equity and equality are two strategies we can use in an effort to produce fairness. Equality is treating everyone the same. However, equity is giving everyone what they need to be successful. Equality aims to promote fairness, but it can only work if everyone starts from the same place and needs the same help. Equity ensures equal access. I am grateful to learn from Jeff about the 9% that should go to make things more fair. I do understand that we need to be reasonable with funds and with the revenue and with things that are going on with property taxes. Title I funds are essential, but often they are not enough. In 2017-18, all title, all nine of the Title I schools combined received $461,000 from school-connected organizations. In 2018-19, it was less. It was $4,000 and $10,000 all combined. While in 2018-19, Davis alone raised $410,000. Newport Coast over $368,000. Anderson raised over $329,000. Mariners over $317,000. These schools raised donations primarily for three purposes: additional staff, services, and supplies. These are three areas of great need across the district. Kudos to these parents who have the means and the inclination to make such a significant contribution to their local schools. It does make a huge difference. I would like to make a few recommendations. To utilize the money in the budget creatively, be it through unrestricted revenue funds or the state lottery, or unrestricted state funding to make up for the gaps. Unrestricted revenue has increased most years and would be a game changer for Title I schools. There was $272 million last year and now there's $286 million. Let's use each of these in innovative and creative ways for our schools. Another idea: Assess and link all funding, but especially that allocated to Title I schools in the district, to measurable and concise outcomes to ensure the programs are delivered and make an impact. If this is done, please let us know more. Also, if we can form a citizens, a budget oversight committee to have study sessions about the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. I think you have to have a clear understanding of all the facts when you talk about, you know, how we provide equity. Equality is something we do through the general fund. Every student, every, every school gets an equal amount of the general fund. But then you do talk about the LCAP concentration. And that doesn't, and Mr. Trader, correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't include our federal funds when we do the LCAP.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the federal fund comes in to our Title I schools and brings in an additional $11 million to those schools. So there is a, part of what the state has done with the LCAP is to build in some equity. So that, you know, and equity is about not what, not what everybody gets, it's about what everybody needs. And so they've already identified those unduplicated students who happen to be your students who come mostly from poverty or from very challenging situations, family situations. And they have already required us to figure out how to use that money on those kids. That money cannot be used and should not be used. And there are some districts who are in trouble using their LCAP and their, what, their concentration funds, which is above the, above the supplemental, for, that were, that are used for salaries for employees. You really can't, you have to use that for services to students. So we have, we do have money that goes to those campuses, the LCAP plus the $11 million from the federal funds.
Thank you. Okay, no more speak.
I just wanted to ask.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm sorry. And it may be something for Vanessa, but I remember when we were, Vanessa was taking us through the LCAP. And something that struck me, because I think it relates to this, is, as an example, Whittier will have next year seven or eight 19 and a half hour employees. Is that correct?
Teachers.
They already have. And then
Yes, so a couple of years ago, when we took another look at our federal funds, we reallocated how we were supporting our Title I schools. So we have different buckets of federal funding, some that are allocated to the district, some that we then disperse to the school site. So each of our Title I elementary schools has one district-funded 19.5 hourly support out of district Title I. Then the sites have discretion to decide how they're going to spend their site-level Title I. And so I believe that they currently have three that they are paying for out of their own. And then at the district level, out of our LCFF dollars, what we have done is looked at the graduated levels of need. And so schools like Whittier, Wilson, Pomona, Ray, they have, and College Park, they have three 19.5 hourly support out of LCFF. And then some schools have two and some schools have one. So you'll notice on our, our sheet here, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I had that reversed. That was my Title I dollars. LCFF covers one for each of the needy schools.
And so for the non-Title I schools, that's why they have to use their own funds to at least
So for the non-Title I schools, we also have schools that have higher levels of need. California, Newport Heights, and Woodland, and Kaiser. And we also then provide at the secondary level some dollar amounts depending on what the schools need. So for instance, LCFF dollars cover a part of a counselor and one section of intervention at Newport Harbor. At Ensign, it's different depending on what they needed. So at the, at the elementary schools I just mentioned, LCFF dollars go toward 19.5 support, as well as some additional classified support that we didn't call out in this presentation.
So then, just as a comparison, what does a school like Anderson get?
I don't know off the top of my head. Generally, the, those schools have other funds that they've been using for whatever they've determined that they need. And that's through their local process to determine their need. So my charge was to look at the LCFF funds in terms of the neediest students first. Also, remember that historically, we used to get funds called Economic Impact Aid, and those were from the state as a categorical, and so we put those out on a per pupil basis. We adjusted that years ago to try and look again to the neediest schools getting the most resources.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Flore.
Vanessa, could you explain concentrate, I'm sorry, but one of the things you talked about in terms of his concentration.
Yes.
And we have needy students throughout our district.
Correct.
Of the 22,000, we have, we have, we have students in every single school
Yes.
that have, our English language learners, our socioeconomic, they're in poverty, they're in Section 8 housing, you name it, they're all across the district. But a lot of the Title I and our funds have to go to concentration. Can you explain what a concentration is one more time?
So, so what we have done is looked at the unduplicated students, and we've looked at the percentages of students at our different schools. So concentration funds are not something that we need to be concerned about in our district because we don't need the definition. We don't have the 55% or more threshold. So in those districts, if you remember the picture that Jeff shared, you have the base funds, and then you have supplemental, and that's for, one for each unduplicated student. When you have districts that have higher concentrations of students in that count, over the 55%, they get an additional dollar amount. So if you think about a place like a Los Angeles Unified or a Santa Ana, they have higher levels of students and higher concentrations of need. Now, a school like Whittier has about 98% unduplicated. And followed by them, I think it's College Park and then Ray, and we have a chart that ranks them. So each year, we look at our counts, and what we do is try and differentiate our support. And we look at that based on what the, what the principals have requested over time. And what they found that they thought was going to be most impactful was support in small group instruction and really looking at the support in foundational skills. Some of it is about math. So it's all based on historically what they have asked for, and it has been in response to those requests. So, but for, for purposes of a concentration, we don't get a concentration of funds, but we look and we realize that a school like Whittier that is so large and has so much need, they might need more than, say, an Adams, right, which is also a Title I school, and yet doesn't have as high a concentration of students in need.
Thank you. Okay. So I am going, no more cards, I'm going to close the public hearing on All Funds Budget. Okay. Now, Dr. Navarro.
Yes, we have an informational item today, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Sung to share that with you.
So I'm going to take this opportunity to share some information about some of the exciting things we're doing in the area of safety. There's been a lot happening, working with a lot of folks, speaking in front of a lot of groups, but I just want to highlight four areas related to safety. The first one is, we have officially launched a page on our website dedicated to safety. I want to thank Annette Franco for putting that together. Uh, it's got a lot of, uh, I think very important and useful information related to safety, and we'll continue to use that webpage to add and update, uh, additional information. So I do encourage everybody to take a look at that. Uh, later on, on this, uh, agenda, we're going to be approving, uh, or recommending for approval, a district-wide emergency communication system. And as we know, when it comes to communication, when we're dealing with emergencies, uh, that is a very, very, uh, critical, uh, you know, system that we need to have in place. And so we will be recommending to you, uh, a district-wide, uh, system, which is, uh, gonna be tightened, uh, and we'll, you'll hear more on that. But, uh, we're very excited to, uh, to spread that, uh, district-wide. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to announce is that we've been working, uh, quite some time on a, um, a bulletin or a safety bulletin related to high heat days. And we know, it's starting to heat up a little bit now, and we know, come the fall, we're gonna be dealing with some, uh, excessive heat days at that time. And we've been doing, as we all know, a lot of things to accommodate, uh, students and staff, uh, on those days. And, uh, the memo that I'm putting together will have those things that we've always done, such as, you know, giving flexibility to the school site, to the teachers to change subjects, so that they're, uh, the important topics are done at the cooler part of the day. Flexibility to move classes around to cooler parts of the, um, campus, and, and probably the most important thing is to keep kids hydrated. And we know how important that is, particularly for, for young children, uh, to make sure they're hydrated. But there's going to be another aspect of that that we are pleased to announce, and with the support of Dr. Navarro and the board, uh, that we will have, uh, some language in there related to an early release on those very, very excessively hot days. Uh, that would be a two-hour early release for our elementary schools and middle schools that do not have air conditioning. And, uh, we, we chose not to include the high schools at this time because they are about 50% air-conditioned, and they have a lot of flexibility amongst the site to, to move kids around. And it's very difficult at the high school level to end school, um, early. So, we're gonna, uh, just focus on the elementary and the middle school, and I will be putting that out, uh, to our principals and to post it on our, uh, district website. And the last thing is, next board meeting on June 26th, I will give you a full update and a full report on many things that are occurring, uh, in, in the area of safety.
Thank you.
Ms. Matoye.
Um, Mr. Lee Sung, what are you, um, what are we basing the early release numbers on?
So, uh, we are, uh, we've been looking at the San Diego Unified School District criteria for that, and, uh, use that as kind of our benchmark, uh, to determine, uh, which day we would use for an early, uh, release. And we felt that was a good criteria to use, so we're gonna model it after that, which is a 95%, uh, I'm sorry, 95-degree or higher temperature and a heat index of 103. So that's the, the model for, uh.
And they cover some pretty hot territory, the San Diego Unified.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any other school districts that, that have, uh, early release for high school in, in California?
You know, I, I'm not aware what I've, I did look at a few districts and their safety pages, and I didn't see any absolute criteria other than the one at San Diego.
And they're the, they're the fourth-largest district in the, in, in California. It may be the second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on to community input on consent and non-agenda items. And our first speaker is Edwin.
Do you want me to read this?
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I do?
Supposed to read this?
I'm sorry.
Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar will be held until that item is considered by the board. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on consent calendar, agenda items, or on non-consent items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, and members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the consent, uh, discussion action. Uh, requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. Any persons with a disability who requires reasonable accommodation to participate in a board meeting may request, uh, assistance by contacting the superintendent's office at 2985 Bear Street, Costa Mesa, California, uh, phone number 714-424-5031. When addressing the board, it is helpful that you state your name and address for the record. All comments are recorded in full on the board meeting video record that is posted as a courtesy on our board, on our website at www.nmusd.us.
Thank you. Okay, our first speaker is Edwin Bell.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder was kind enough to distribute my statement because my students, as well as my colleagues, know, there's no way I can talk for three minutes. The most important thing that I wanna bring to mind is that, as a teacher at Newport Harbor High School, I could not be prouder of being affiliated with this district. I did my student teaching at CDM. I spent 11 years at Costa Mesa High School. I spent summers, uh, teaching summer school at Estancia, and now I'm in my fifth year at Newport Harbor. There are so many incredible things going on, and most of my students are underperforming, reluctant learners, who also are socio-economically disadvantaged, and we're still doing great things. But the thing that sticks in my mind is I went to a professional development, and they made a comment that stuck with me. For every one negative thing, a student needs to hear eight positive things to counteract that. So I couldn't help but take note of the April and May issue regarding our rodent problem at Newport Harbor. And I said, you know what? It's a reality, we're dealing with it, because the majority of mice and rats can fit through a hole the size of a quarter. I challenge anybody to show me a facility that doesn't have an opening where that's possible. So there's a number of variables, but one of them is, again, cleaning up our campus. And from day one, Principal Bolton has spearheaded a clean campus program where we have made sure that we've done everything we possibly can. We added trash cans, we actually even had shirts made up.
I love that.
For our staff to be able to promote the team effort, I've been out, along with administration and security, walking the campus, reminding kids respectfully and kindly to throw away trash, because with 2,400 students, rats are going to take advantage of that. But the things that I really wanna focus on are the positives. Principal Bolton, from day one, has been there as the champion for the kids, he's been a champion for the teachers, and he does so many things that I really truly believe deserve his recognition. And the latest thing that he's launched, which I am a proud member to be a part of, is the Newport Harbor Cares Initiative, which is dealing with mental wellness and helping our students deal with anxiety, depression, and the issues that are facing them and preventing them from being successful students as well as citizens. I could go on for minutes, probably hours, talking about so many great things that are happening at Newport Harbor. But Principal Bolton is an incredibly sensitive, caring, strong leader who does everything in the best interest of our school. He truly lives by the motto, "You'll get more done if you're not concerned with who gets the credit." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Did you just give him a 20? That, it's great, thank you. It was nice to hear. Um, okay, next speaker is Susan Seager.
She left.
Oh, did she leave? Oh, darling. Okay. She wanted to talk about the OC Equestrian Center, she's been speaking about that. Erica Roberts.
My name is Erica Roberts, I'm a community member, um, very active, and our community own a business, and I'm here to, um, have a public comment. First, I would like to say that Sean Bolton has proven himself to be a very true leader. I know he has a lot of respect, and he takes, um, accountability, he apologizes, he works with the kids and the parents, he's awesome. Russell Lee Sung, I wanna thank you for the information on the heat days. Um, my understanding is the union has been asking for this for four years for student and staff, so it was necessary, and it's better late than never. I am going to report back to my friend Lori Smith, who will be pleased to know that you took her research and looked at San Diego as a model for Newport Mesa, so I think that's really awesome because when those classrooms hit 92 and 93 degrees, and we have to have the doors locked, there's no reason kids should be in there, we wouldn't do that for animals. So we need to show our teachers and our kids respect. Um, going to classroom size, I would like to address that because I think it's so important. There's a lot of research showing that when classroom size is reduced, the teachers are gonna know those kids, we know there's a lot of anxiety and angst in the classroom, even as young as second and third grade. Um, I've been talking to a lot of parents, I'm in the trenches with them, so I can tell you it's a true thing, and then it just grows as, you know, more responsibility is put on them. But we were told the average class was 28. I was lucky enough to have a meeting with Martha Flor back in March, she was very kind, and I have been waiting, and this week I received the document without teacher names but of all the numbers in classes. I was very curious about the classroom size and how we load classes and when we stop actually adding kids to the class. Teachers and parents so desperately wanted, needed curriculum changes, and the LCAP should have addressed this. I believe the LCAP should also address classroom size. It is my strong opinion that while teachers are implementing two new math curriculums for Language Arts and Math, they should be supported, and this district said they would support. High school will be piloting next year. My daughter unfortunately has either been with Swan Math in a pilot and now a pilot next year, so it hasn't been a great experience on the math side for us personally. Board, it would behoove you to make sure that these wonderful teachers are not overwhelmed with 38 students in non-air-conditioned classrooms with two new curriculums without much time to support each other or team plan. Martha Flor gave me the class document, and I'd like to share with you some important data. 28 was the average, remember. At College Park, we have 38 and 36 kids in two different classrooms. If we made one more teacher at that grade level, sixth grade, that could turn it into 25, 25, and 24, that's way more manageable. Anderson has 18 and 20 again. Ray, 33 and 35. Whittier, 34 and 32. My question is, how is putting 38 kids into a class with new curriculum supporting kids and teachers? We can do better. You said we should support teachers and go slow. Lower classroom size should be mandatory, it would be respectful to our teachers and our kids. Please, um, consider that, it would be really important. Also, one more, um, statement, this document, I think, would be very helpful to school-site council parents going in, because we really don't know what we're doing. So if you gave this, yes, if you gave this and to PTA, people would understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Annie Lynn.
She left.
Aw, shoot. Took too long. Okay. Do you want, would you like to take a break? I, it's.
That would be nice.
Okay. Um, we, since we've, um, all the speakers have spoken, we are going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 8:31. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at 8:35. Um, and so now, um, the consent calendar.
Superintendent report. He hadn't finished, he didn't do it yet.
No, it's not time, it's, it's time for the. Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, it's my, uh, opportunity to report. Okay, um, I wanna, uh, go back to this issue that was brought up about class size. I think that, um, it's, um, it's incom, it's incomplete information, and you shouldn't just present incomplete information, you should present complete information. Uh, averages are skewed, just like any measure of central tendency. Uh, that's why, you know, real estate companies like to use a median instead of an average or a mode. Uh, so, uh, so when you look at a, a, a school, uh, you can see that there are bubbles. Unfortunately, like I've said many times, students don't come in packages of 24.
No.
All right, and we always have one grade level that ends up, there's, there's a bubble. So, uh, I can say, if they're, after looking at those, uh, enrollment reports that, that I get, we have every school that has one bubble, where they've got, uh, too many kids for two teachers and not enough for three teachers. Uh, and they make those decisions sometimes based on what the student needs are. They actually decide to have smaller class sizes, maybe in, in, uh, in, in the, or early primary grades. I know when I was at Costa Mesa, we made a specific decision to load our AP classes with higher numbers and use that money, use that staffing to build smaller ELD classes because those kids had more needs. Uh, so, yeah, you could say there's 33, 35, but when you look at the average, the average just comes out to about 27, 28. I know that, uh, Mrs. Flor has some information on that, 'cause she has the, uh, report that I, um, respond, that I'm, uh, referring to.
Yeah, I just wanna make some really, um, some clarifying. I did send, uh, Mrs. Roberts, uh, and I have emailed it to you, the, the enrollment report, and it was a, if February, it was a February 5th, um, enrollment report. And she mentioned College Park, and yes, College Park has two, uh, sixth-grade classes, there are no names attached that are 38 and 26. What she fails to tell you is that in, uh, the fifth grade, there are three fifth-grade classes, they are 27, 26, and 26. So next year, the presumption is that they will continue to be small class sizes. In the second grade, they are 18, 17, 22, and 28. Um, and the majority of all the classes in that school, other than the, the sixth grade, promoting sixth-grade classes, are within, uh, well, and, uh, the, most of them are all 20, 27 or below, with only one class at 27. At Mariners, she also mentioned Mariners. Mariners currently, and let me scroll down to that one so I can give you an idea of what that one says. Mariners currently has, yes, three classes, 33, 35, and 34. They also have, uh, four fifth-grade classes, 27, 28, 28, and 28. And in the fourth grade, it's 27, 28, 25. And actually, in the second grade, it's 22, 22, 24, 23, and 21, they have five. So again, those numbers will, as those kids move up to the grade levels, they also will, like you said, Dr. Navarro, a bubble. Um, for Whittier, which is one of our largest schools, she also mentioned Whittier, and I just wanna make sure that we have all the information when we're talking about this and not just, um, it, at Sonora, for example, uh, the sixth grade has 25, 30, and 32, the fifth grade has 20, 27, and 22. The fifth, the fourth grade is 21, 25, and 24. Um, so that's another, uh, school. Victoria, the largest class size, is 29 at, uh, sixth grade, but the, and there's only two, and the, and the fifth grade is 27 and 20, and the second grade is 18 and 19. Um, and at Whittier, there are, there's that one combination class, which is at 29, 15 fifth graders, 14 sixth graders, 30, 31, and 32. And their, uh, fifth graders are going to be large unless they do something, and they may, may, may adjustment because they're 34, 33, and 33. But, again, their second grade class is 20, 18, 17, 19, and 18. So again, as you said, Dr. Navarro, there is, uh, there's a, there's a bubble that's moving, moving through of the large class sizes. As well as, I believe you said, it, uh, Dr. Lee Sung mentioned at one point about class size, the fact that this district makes a really concerted effort to not have combo classes. And so, according to this, there looks like there's like two combo classes, one that's a kindergarten, uh, there's one kindergartner, and then there's, the rest is first grade, and then there's that one other class. So, I just wanna give you a clear picture, and I'm, you know, I certainly, um, I can email this so that everybody has the same documentation and I sent it to all of you.
I just wanna underscore what, um, Mrs. Flor said. We did, I, Ed Division and the Budget Division worked very closely so that teachers wouldn't have combo classes if at all possible. And so to have really only two in the district is really quite an accomplishment. Uh, I know Ms. Matoye always had a combo class.
Oh, yeah.
That she had to deal with. Um, the other thing I wanted to discuss is that, you know, if I, I would, uh, be disingenuous if I only talked about the small classes, but we don't do that. So when we talked about your class sizes, we took, uh, separate independent measures. The numbers I presented came from the Office of Civil Rights and a central tendency measure they use. Uh, that's not my number, that's their number. And I wanted to use that because it tells you what the other districts look like. Um, and then, uh, Ms. Olson used a report from School Services of California when she talked about the class sizes averages in our district. And then Dr. Sur talked about, actually took the numbers off of our enrollment sheet. So you've got three different points of information, and to pick on just one is in, is incomplete. Uh, it really is, you have to look at three different points, that gives you an idea of really where you sit with your class sizes. And we are committed, and the board has always been committed, to smaller class sizes, uh, and, uh, that the fact that we have only two combo classes in the whole district is really quite an, uh, an accomplishment, and I know that that's something. something that the Ed Division wants to continue.
Oh, Ms. Matoye.
And I, being a former elementary principal, I know you were a high school principal, but being a former elementary principal, when I read our first list, after hearing how we were going to have no combos, and that popped right up there for me at Whittier, and I went, "Ah." And then I went and talked to the Whittier principal, and their site wanted that. They had a specific reason. They had a specific groups of kids. And that's one of the things that's, that's, it's, the staffing numbers were determined, then the configurations that could possibly be made were decided, and then the sites had decision-making process. And when I say sites had decision-making, I don't mean all the teachers sat around and decided, but the lead team, or however each site principal made their decision. A lot of sites chose to have lower class sizes in grades K through 3 and take the burden on with the upper grades. And speaking as someone who taught in upper grades, I would have been willing to do that. Now, 38 kids, that's a lot of bodies in a classroom. Physically, a lot of bodies. Totally understand that. But if it's that one bubble, or five kids came in over winter break, it was 32 or 33, it's, 38 gets to be ginormous.
And I do want to let you know that the Ed Division did increase staffing at one school where it became much too big in a kindergarten grade level. It just was too large, so an intervention teacher was added to manage that.
And sometimes they'll, Ed Division will offer, and the teachers are going, "Well, no, I know my kids. I know them now. And how do we tell the parents that we're going to take the kids apart, and their other friends and everything?" And that's happened at schools that I've worked at. So there's a lot, would I love it personally if we had 24 in all the upper grades and 20 in all the lower grades? Absolutely. But then Mr. Trader would be really upset because that number from the red line would absolutely cross that blue line.
And I also want to add one other part, and I know that this isn't, I spoke to Mrs. Yelsey about this. It's not the job of the foundations to fund our intervention teachers in our schools. So I asked Mr. Trader to put together a plan over the next four or five years, how we can then absorb those costs, so that our foundations aren't paying for intervention teachers. So it's a, it's a big ask. He's gonna, it's going to take quite a bit. But that's something we don't want any of our schools having to do, is provide intervention programs. That's our job as a district. And so he's going to look at how we can migrate all those costs over to us, because we should be covering those services.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to add one thing back to the class size discussion. I just want to validate what Dr. Navarro, Mrs. Flore, Ms. Matoye have said, because if Dr. Sur was here, he'd be saying this on our behalf, that this College Park class size issue, we analyzed that very closely, and it's exactly what you said. This was a collaboration with the site, making some decisions and putting the resources more towards the primary grades. In this case, you nailed it right on the head, the second grade level. And with the principal there, Rich Rodriguez, and the intervention program felt that that was the best resource. And he did that also in conjunction with, collaboration with the teachers involved. So that's a very good example of how we work together on staffing. And when there is a situation that warrants an added teacher, we have those discussions. I'm part of those discussions, and we make the decisions. We go to Jeff Trader, and he's always been very supportive when we can justify it based on the numbers. And we do do that on several occasions each and every year.
Is a special begging chair that we can sit in and say, "Please, we need one more here."
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent calendar.
All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of this consent calendar.
Move adoption of the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, so we have...
All in favor?
I don't know. She's got to read out.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so the consent calendar is moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Ms. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, so that passes. Moving on to discussion action calendar, Mr. Drake.
I do have some friends here.
Do you have pom poms or something?
And I promise, they will have a majority of the time. But President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, I'm extremely excited to be here to recommend approval of the illustrative math materials for our sixth through eighth grade math program. Oh, I'm going to have to sign in as well.
Sign in.
I think Mrs. Gailey's getting even with you.
Yes. I don't know what's happening here.
They didn't want anybody to see your password.
I know. You may have to change it. Welcome back, ladies. Nice to see you.
Wrong password.
Yeah, I know it is. I love technology, don't you?
It's made our lives so easy.
When you get hacked.
Which is, which is why we got a budget book.
You can put that back. Put that back there if you don't mind.
Ah, that's going to be a problem. We will get there.
Forgot my password. Is what, you're supposed to sign that one. Where's awesome?
Where's Ryan?
Ryan doesn't have his password.
Oh, that's true.
John, I'm going to teach you my tech secret, okay? I asked Vanessa to fix it for me.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
Now I need, I need permission to my own document, I guess.
I know.
All right, let's see here.
Oh, that's encouraging.
Reconnecting.
Well, I'm going to carry on. I don't necessarily need the slides. If they come up, that'll be great.
You could show them in this format.
Let's see here.
You can handle that.
So you signed me out. That's all right. I will wear pink next time and maybe show me. Anyhow, you've seen this slide before. And we really, you know, I want to take us back, actually, two years, when we actually started our K-5 adoption process, because we talked a lot about the actual experience we want kids to start having with their math program. And our K-5 teachers went through the similar process that our 6-8 teachers just went through, and chose a program that was progressive, a program that could actually allow them to take kids deeper into the mathematical concepts and actually achieve the expectations of our math program. Part of the process that our 6-8 went through right at the beginning in August is they actually dove into the Bridges materials, the K-5 materials, to really understand that experience that kids were going to have in kindergarten through fifth grade, and that experience they would be coming to them with in math, really committing to that K-12 experience that were, that really is our vision for mathematics. And so that, along with making sure that the materials were aligned and that they were materials that were going to allow us to deepen, you know, dive deep into the mathematical concepts and allow kids to gain that understanding, you know, for future math. And they've done an amazing job at that. Our very last meeting of the summer, before we really dove into the pilot process and training, we asked teachers this question, and you've seen this before, but, you know, how do they expect to prepare students for, you know, quantitative future? And all of the pieces that they came up with really had nothing to do with being able to plug in, you've heard me say this before, plug in numbers to algorithms and get a right answer, but have everything to do with thinking deeply about math, understanding it conceptually, being able to procedurally go through to get answers, but more importantly, they understand it so well that they can apply it. And those were the traits they were looking for in relation to materials, so that kids were leaving us with a K-12 experience, with a deep understanding of math, right, and an ability to apply it to their lives. That was the, you know, that is the K-12 experience we're creating with kids. And I'm excited to recommend to you approval of illustrative math materials. And I throw this slide up there because illustrative math materials are the highest-rated sixth through eighth grade math materials out there. They are materials that are going to allow us to dive deep into the, into the work for all of our kids. And that's why my friends are behind me, because they're the ones who do it and have done it and have that experience, and I want them to share that with you tonight.
Good evening. Hello, Dr. Snell, President Snell, Dr. Navarro, and board members. My name is Amy Samir. I am math teacher, seventh, eighth, and math intervention at CDM. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about my experience with IM. It has been a great experience to see a curriculum that is, have the coherence from K to 12, and to actually use the students' knowledge that they have learned in elementary, in middle school, and carry on to high school. It's also well-aligned with our standards and frameworks, so that makes it a little bit easier for the teachers to actually focus on the students and on teaching rather than on finding materials to help the students. In my class, we had a lot of aha moments. And the aha moments didn't only come from the students, it only came from, it also came from me. I had the aha moment of, "Oh, so this is how I can teach this topic in an easier way for the students to understand it." And for them, there was, "Oh, so this is how we can actually solve this problem or understand this concept." So there were a lot of aha moments during group work and during the class discussion. In the previous materials, I always got the questions from the students of, "Why are we studying these topics? Why are we doing this?" And you can relate. In this curriculum, it actually answered the why. It, I didn't get the why from the students. They already knew why. They already knew how to explain things. One thing about this curriculum, it's always asking for students' reasoning. It's not asking them to apply as much as it's asking them to, "Why did you use this method? Why are you following these steps?" This is the reasoning behind the concept. And I believe without the reasoning, the students are not going to understand what they are doing. Another thing is, I took the liberty of using the material again beyond the piloting six weeks. I have used it recently in a unit that, for eighth grade. And what I found is that they have used the knowledge that the students have from fourth and fifth grade in finding the area of a triangle and the area of a square, to actually find the square root of a number, or finding the distance between two points. So it's a very cohesive curriculum, not only within the grade level, but also throughout their educational time. It also, within each unit, it's not, it's not putting the other units aside. They are still using it in every single unit. So in the last unit, they are asking them questions from unit one and unit two. So it's not saying, "Okay, you're done with this topic. It's over." No, it's, you're going to use it all over. And this is something that my students were so happy to work with, and they were so excited to see the, the type of questions that were asked, the group work that they asked the teachers to put the students in groups and have them discuss the topic, and then we discuss it as a whole class. The curriculum is a great guidance for the teacher to guide the students. So even without any teacher on their own can go online, read the instructions, and understand very well how to break down the class and guide the students, and it will be very successful. This is my experience. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Hello again. My name is Stephanie Marvickson. I'm the middle school math tosa, and I'm also a teacher at Costa Mesa Middle School. I had the opportunity this year to pilot with a group of our honor students. And then because this is a free and on curriculum, I took advantage and I used the materials also for a very good portion of the year with students that are coming to our school that are two and three grade levels behind. So I really got to experience the honors level and the, the lower-level students that are coming in. And what I've realized is that this curriculum is brilliantly written. It really does help students start with a low point of entry, so that every student can come in. It really eliminates the fear that a lot of our lower-performing students come in, and "I can't do this. I don't understand it," and starts with problems that really don't have a right answer. It's really, like, they put up four images, and they say, "Which one doesn't belong?" And there's a reason for all four of them. So any student feels comfortable raising their hand and, and talking about what they think about the problem. And then the high-achieving students can go into that same problem and offer this knowledge, and they can sort of show what they know at a much deeper level. But everyone can get into the, into the curriculum. And that's consistent from every lesson to every unit to the whole year. I really found that the students that were starting off the year a few grade levels behind were still able to access a lot of the curriculum. And then some of the honor students really got stumped on some problems, and they got frustrated with it. And it made me very happy as their teacher, because it was challenging enough for them, and they were more excited when they were able to persevere through those types of problems. So one example I have from the lower-performing students, to give you an idea about what this curriculum is about, is with a unit on proportions and percents. So percents are typically a topic that middle school students struggle with, even though as adults, we use them in our everyday life multiple times. And so what the curriculum did is it took out the piece where they had to set up this proportion, where you have one fraction equal to another fraction, and then you cross-multiplier and solve. And what it did instead is help students develop methods using models and diagrams to understand percents, how we think about them. So if we wanted to take 40% of a number, we would probably find, sorry, we'd probably find 10% and then multiply it by four. And so the lower-performing students really liked this model, because once they learned how to find 10% or 1%, they could find any percent. So a lot of these students came to my class without knowing how to multiply. And so if you set up a cross-product, and they don't know how to multiply, they're never going to access that content. What they could do is add, and they knew that multiplication was repeated addition. And so they set up their chart, and they put 10%, and they knew they had to find 40%, like a 40% sale, and they did the 10% number, and they added it again to find 20%. They added it again for 30%. They added it again for 40%. Now they're able to access the grade-level content. And so what the curriculum does is it provides them that model, and then it builds and builds and builds. So eventually, they do get to the cross-products. But if a student ever gets to the cross-products, that's okay, because they have a method and they have a strategy that they can use. This week, our school did an end-of-year diagnostic test, and there's a percent problem on it. And we haven't really covered percents since October. And every one of those lower-performing students that came in set up a model and a diagram to help them find 40% discount. So that's sort of something that, that we can use, and how we know we can access those kids as well as challenge the upper-level kids. And this is just written in a way where the coherence and the purposefulness of how they're setting up the problems is really, really cool. It's fun as a teacher, like Amy said, you learn and you grow as a teacher. Like, when she's talking about square roots, I did this unit as well with my students, they're actually finding a square root, because it's the side length of the area of a square. And a lot of times, we don't teach it that way. We just tell them to memorize something. So the understanding of the why is really important, and it's so important for retention. And we're finding a lot of retention so far using this program. So we have some quotes about what students said.
They're really tiny, so you'll have to read them.
They're really small. So the first one says, "My greatest experience was continually trying to solve the tough math questions. They were hard, but when I would finish, I had a sense of pride. When I was able to help other people with the math concept, I felt like I succeeded being able to understand the concept. This is because it fills me with joy and power." We're talking about math. The greatest success, the greatest success- The greatest success, the greatest success about this program is that sometimes there's a lot of hands-on learning. This helps the class better understand how to answer the questions to the math. I feel my greatest success in this program is learning how to use ratios in everyday life. Using this resource for this unit helped me because it uses many pictures, models, and everyday examples. I now understand how you can use ratios while cooking and shopping. I thought that one of my greatest successes was when I could just not get the concept, but I kept trying and trying, and I started to get the hang of it. All of the strategies really helped me. So these are from the mouths of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and if they're saying that after one unit, I can't imagine what they're going to think at the end of the year. Thank you.
Great. Wow. Thank you.
So with that being said, I highly recommend illustrative math to you for approval as our sixth, sixth through eighth grade math instructional materials.
Okay, Mrs. Flor.
Thank you, and I am thrilled, but I, I just have a sort of, it's, I have a seventh grader at Cronod Omar who has been going through the process, and of course, I have a son-in-law who's a manufacturing engineer, and he's like, what? I know this answer, I can't figure this out. And it was staying up all night to try and figure it out. The question I have is, I mean, in the old days, it was rote memorization, and so is some of the frustration that our high, our high learners are learning is because they're so used to being compliant and getting, knowing that, you know, this is the way to do it, I've memorized this, why can't, you know, I don't understand why I have to explain this, because I've memorized. Is that, are you finding that that's part of the, the frustration that our, our high-end achieving are, they're just not able to, to really delve deep into the program because I know the, I know the formula. I know how to, I know how to get the square root, I know how to do this. I don't, you know, don't ask me about everything else.
Well, just to assure you, I am a former electrical engineer, so I know exactly where he's coming from. I know exactly where he's coming from, and yes, the way we were taught, I was taught, and others were taught is, here's the form, formula, memorize it, and you're done. But what we have found over the years is that, yes, kids memorize the formula, by the time they get out of my class, they don't remember the formula. So this is the, hopefully, this is what we are trying to get them to do, is that they remember how to develop the formula, and how to actually come down to a way that it doesn't have to be the formula in front of them to solve the problem, they can use the reasoning, and they can use their previous knowledge that they have been learning from kindergarten to solve a complicated problem. Again, this brings us back to the square root. They, they didn't teach them that you have to take the square root, they taught them, find the area of a square, and then find the length of the sides of a square, and this is going to be your square root. So it's, it's not about the formula memorization as much as, do you understand how to develop the formula, and how to use what you know already to answer a question? And I believe at the beginning of the year, I saw one of the slides in one of the professional developments saying that the market for hiring has changed. It's no longer the computation that they are looking for, it's, they are looking for somebody to come up with new ideas and somebody to invent new things. And this is what we are trying to take our kids to. It's not computing on a computer, because computers now, as you can see, even, yeah, even though it glitches sometimes, but it still can give you the answer with a click of a button. And the, the business owners and CEOs do not want that, they want somebody to actually develop something. And this is what we are trying to take our kids to.
So the big question is, I guess, from my point of view, is how are we going to communicate this to the parents? How are we going to tell our parents, you know, that, guess what? It's a new day, and you all have to go back to school, too.
Vanessa's going to be very proud of me when I refer to the LCAP. We did write that into our plan of making sure that we are getting out into the community and holding parent community nights. We will make an official notice that we will have our first one on the eighteenth of this month with Patrick Callahan at Newport Harbor High School from six-thirty to eight o'clock to start getting this word out, both from a, you know, a K-12 perspective as well as from a, from a college perspective down.
And can that be, can that be filmed?
And that will happen several times throughout these next couple of months.
So can we film that? Can we have that filmed? Is there a way to get that filmed?
We can ask to see if our, if our stage crew is available.
So that, at the very least, somebody could access it online and, and it be on our website?
Have him come another night, too.
Well, but again, there's, some people may not be able to, but if we could...
We'll have him come out several different times, so that we're covering all the zones in all of the schools.
I really do, I think it's just as hands-on for our kids, you know, our students, and our teachers, you know, for our teachers to learn as well, as, I think our parents need it as well. I think they, after doing a couple in the district, because I know that's how I learn, you know, I need to see it, and I think they've been very, sorry to... Oh, that's okay. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yes. I really appreciate the way you went about this with consensus, I think that's a great way to come, come up with what program we're using. And I know that the seventh and eighth grade teachers were probably more supportive than the sixth grade teachers initially coming into this, at least, that was what I heard from some sixth grade teachers. You're looking at me like, no?
I don't know what you mean by supportive, what do you mean by that?
They were not quite as comfortable with illustrative math as maybe the seventh and eighth. That's my, that's what I've heard from some, from some teachers. So is it because these teachers, math is their background, they know it, and it's easier for them to teach? And if so, sixth grade teachers probably are, math is not their strong suit for most of them. What kind of supports are we going to need to give to those teachers to help them along with this program?
Yeah, so quite a bit, but I think it's all teachers. I mean, I think when, when you hear, you know, veteran teachers or electrical, electrical engineers saying, I'm even discovering things through this curriculum, I think all of our teachers are going to need support to recognize how, how to use these materials to take kids to the, to the depth of understanding that, that the, the standards are expecting us to. I, I want to kind of go back to that sixth grade initial comment. All I can share with you is, and unfortunately, we don't have Alice Formanek or Stephanie Lakin here tonight, they were invited, to share that sixth grade perspective, but the commitment to that K-12 experience was the conversation. And while sixth grade teachers, at least in some of the small groups during consensus that I was part of, in listening to them, they got to the point where they recognized, yeah, this is going to be better for kids, to make sure that we are connecting to the middle school. As far as, as supports, we will definitely run moonlight sessions for teachers who want that before units. We are also going to be working with illustrative math, because part of their business model is really to provide the PD behind the, the incredible materials, to regularly do pre-unit training for teachers, and we're also looking at embedding the model within the work that they do, not pulling them out for a day and training them, but doing that within their planning time and so forth, you know, on, on different days.
Okay.
So there will be, it'll be extensive.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Matoye.
Will that, that, I'm sorry, button pushing, will that include a summer program like we had with the elementary teachers?
Yes, we're, we're ironing out the dates right now, but we will definitely have two days of, of, I'm going to say optional summer training for them to attend before the two days or before the, the August return. And then for those teachers that can't make that time, we will have two days during the August return.
Perfect. And my second question was to our fabulous teachers, how did you find the assessments? Were they aligned? Did they?
They're tall, John. The assessments were aligned to the standards, so some of the authors that worked on illustrative math were the same authors of the standards. And so when they wrote the curriculum, they had that in mind. All of the assessments are seven questions. There's a pre, there's a pre-unit before every unit to give a teacher a diagnostic, and it has like third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade prior knowledge content, as well as content that's in the unit, so the teacher can take that information and decide, where do my students need more support, and where can I go a little faster? And then there are sometimes mid-unit and always end-of-unit assessments that are seven questions, and they have that same philosophy of they start with problems that all kids can access, and then they get to the really, really deep questions. Questions one, two, and three are somewhat factual, and do they know the processes, and do they understand the basic concepts? And then as the questions, as you get further down into the test, that question seven is usually a really big application problem, where they're mixing multiple content ideas together, and multiple course things together. But I really like the assessments, they're, they're, they're really, they're well-written, because you can tell where a student lies on the continuum of their knowledge. So if a student's getting one, two, and three right, and then they miss the rest of them, they only got this far. But if a student's mastering question seven, they're above, they're above the standard on, on this topic. So I think, I think they're very well-written.
Are they paper pencil or online?
They're paper pencil. They're paper pencil, we're using, LearnZillion has an online platform, and it's not up and running yet, but what they have said is the students can enter the answers online, and they use the same applets that the CASP test uses, the S-PAC uses, so the students will be used to answering test questions the same way. And then the teachers can actually, because those are scored as like a short answer, short response, constructed response, the teachers can type in their own rubric for how they want to score it, and then it'll calculate the score, and we can see the data that way. So it'll automatically score the ones that have sort of one right or wrong answer, and then those open-ended ones, the teachers get to type in their own rubric and score it.
It's again more challenging, but the data that you get would be so much more useful.
Yes, and...
And faster to gather it all together.
And then hopefully, we can do some district-wide analysis and things like that.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Great. Yes, we do.
I move that we approve the illustrative math, the mathematics at grade six through eight, as the sixth, grade six through eight instructional math materials, that was...
Second. Good job. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve illustrative mathematics made by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Flor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Wonderful.
We have math next year. Yay. Thanks for coming.
They can get that right now.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We should have put it in the front.
Oh, the materials, they can access materials right away. They can access materials right now, correct?
Mr. Drake.
Teachers can. Well, just in case you wanted a break this summer.
Thanks so much for staying.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for staying, too, and coming back to the podium.
But wait, there's more.
There's more.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Drake.
So I am going to ask Caroline to come back on up to help us with this one, but just as discussion action, we, we have, or we were in about the beginning of April approached by illustrative math to, for our high school courses to, to be a beta pilot district for their high school materials that they've developed. And that was prior to even our middle school committing to illustrative math. We were towards the end of our process, but they had not yet committed. So at that point, I convened the, the high school steering committee and threw the option out to them. And once again, they went right to kind of that August date when they made the decision to step away from piloting and going through an adoption process this year so that they could connect to whatever decisions six through eight were, was going to make. So in April, when I approached them with this, they said yes. There was, there was really, you know, conversation around that idea of, we stepped away because of this K-12 experience, we have the opportunity to potentially get there, especially if six, eight chooses illustrative math. And so they were in. So we are entering into this next school year, and we will spend the entire school year in a pilot process with the illustrative math, high school materials only this next year. And that was another conversation I had with them. I said, you know, what if they're not up to, to what, what we need? And their response at that point was, you know, it's worth it if we can actually, you know, make that connection, and if not, then we're committing to another year of pilot after that. So, you know, there, it, it's a little bit of a gamble, other than, as Stephanie mentioned, the authors of these materials are the authors of our, our standards. I'm pretty confident that they're going to be aligned. That doesn't mean that there won't need to be some tweaks to them, but I think it's one of those opportunities that our teachers saw, and I'll let Carolyn take over from here, as one that they, they just could not pass up.
I'm short, too. Hi. Hello again, President Snell, Dr. Navarro, members of the board, nice to see you again. Yeah, just picking up where John left off, the high school teachers are really excited about this. It was a hard decision, I can't tell you, to wait another year, because we've been waiting to, for the publishers to finally produce something that is actually aligned to the standards, and the hope and the excitement about the illustrative math curriculum at the high school level, I mean, we're just so excited to see what they come up with at the high school, or at the, sorry, at the middle school level, we're so excited to see what they come up with for high school. Seeing Bill McCollum, who's one of the authors of the curriculum and one of the authors of the standards, speak about this in November at a conference we went to, he showed us some examples from the curriculum, and I mean, it looks fantastic. And so I just can't wait to get, I honestly can't wait to get my hands on it. And the steering committee, you know, feels the same way, the, the opportunity to give it a go was just too great, and one that we just couldn't really afford to miss, because we really are committed as a group to that K-12 experience. We're tired of students having fragmented math experiences coming to us from different, different experiences at different levels, and so knowing now that, you know, a couple years down the road, they're going to be coming to us from having bridges and then having illustrative math, you know, we want to continue that really rich mathematics education. And as a high school teacher, I'm just really excited to finally go as deep as I've always wanted to go. At the high school level, in previous years, we've always had to spend a lot of time filling in gaps, and so, you know, the hope is, and I feel pretty confident, that we'll have less time devoted to that in the future, and more time really devoted to the, like, rich mathematical modeling tasks that the standards actually call for the students to perform and perform at a very high level. And so it's exciting, it's an exciting time to be a math teacher in our district, and so, yeah, that's it.
Ms. Matoye. So my understanding of this, as it is clearly written, that this is a beta test?
Correct.
So that means our teachers will be the ones that be able to provide the input to the publisher, so whereas when we're piloting, it's like, well, this is what we get, do we, can, how do we adapt to it? But we can say, you know what, this is great. But if you did, could you put this chapter in here and this chapter there, and it'll be more seamless? So that's kind of, it's, it's a responsibility, but it's also exciting, because we're going to help make it wonderful.
It is, and they're a very adaptive organization, illustrative math. I forget the exact percentage, John might remember it, but I think it was around a twenty-five percent of the middle school curriculum was adjusted in response to feedback from their beta pilot.
Wow.
So we will have that opportunity. It's also a privilege to be part of it. I have teacher friends in other districts that are like, oh, you guys, you guys get to do that? That's so cool. You know, we applied, we didn't get it, or whatever, and so, yeah, so it's exciting.
I like being the envy of somebody.
Yeah. Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, I've got the open-up contract here, and it says Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And I know that this is a sensitive topic, but the question I have is because we don't have Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, we have what's called integrated math. And so, John, could you explain how this, how this is going to roll out with a pilot, please?
Yes, I can. So the, the materials, as they've designed them at this point, are in the traditional sequence, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. We spent time as a steering committee, because they were giving us the option to go ahead and spend our time, and it would have been a lot of time, rearranging into an integrated pathway. Jake Haley and I actually were able to meet with Bill McCollum when we were in Washington, DC at the national conference, and talk to him about that. And while he said you could do it, one of his concerns would have been, or was, and it was a major concern, he said, would be that if we were to do that, the coherence of the program, the story of the math that the program tells is, is at stake. And we talked some more and got to the point, and the steering committee got here as well, where, does it make more sense for us right now to pilot the materials as originally written, and spend more of our time this year in the pilot focusing on instruction? Because regardless of what materials we have, we need to really focus on empowering our teachers to take kids deeper in their mathematical thinking and build their own content knowledge. And so that was the, the ultimate decision of, of the steering committee was, let's not mess with the materials, let's beta pilot them as, as written. If they're good enough, probably January, we'll start that conversation again of, are these going, are these looking? these going, are these looking like they're going to be the materials we use? And if so, what do we want to do next as far as, you know, staying integrated or moving, you know, to a, to a traditional path, uh, sequence? The, the pilot itself, so the design of the pilot is to make sure that every ninth grader, Math One student is, is part of the pilot. So all of our ninth graders will pilot. There's a, there's a need to have some Math Three classes pilot so that we can see how the, the materials can support then a, a, you know, fourth year of math for kids. And so that's, that's the design at this point of our pilot.
So basically what you're saying, still have Math One, Two, and Three for the, for the, on the report card and on progress reports, it'll be Math One, Two, and Three. But you're going to communicate to the parents that they're going to be having, it's going to be Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. Is that?
So our, our Math Two class?
You're only doing, you're doing first, you're doing ninth grade?
We're doing all ninth grade.
Which is Algebra I.
And select Math Three.
Okay. So we're only, we're starting really slow, in other words. We're starting with just nine.
And we would roll in if we decide to go that way.
Okay. Okay. And so again, how are we communicating this with parents?
We will, we will hold parent communication nights and we will also get information out in writing to all freshmen. And as we've done in all of our pilots, making sure parents are aware that their kids are participating in a pilot and this is what's happening in the pilot.
And then enhanced math, the higher level math, how is that addressed in, in the, in the program?
So for the pilot, the reason for the design, because originally, as middle school did this year, not everybody would, would pilot. Just certain select teachers would pilot because it's, it's a big time commitment. But we realized with the traditional, the materials being traditional, it's being immigr- integrated, the only way that we could do this pilot is if every Math One student took Algebra One because then next year they can take Geometry. And so even if, say worst-case scenario, which I don't think is going to happen, materials are terrible, we hate them, we have one cohort of students who gets, you know, a geometry next year and we continue with our integrated sequence with everybody else. So their, their math story in high school hasn't been disrupted. We wanted to make sure that they cover all the standards in a cohesive way. So that, and I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I forgot your question.
About the, the, the higher level?
Oh, the higher level. So the enhanced level. So as I think Stephanie, actually, both Stephanie and Amy kind of alluded to, the materials have what's called a low floor and a very, very high ceiling. So it is totally feasible with the same set of materials to reach students who are below grade level and are also ready to, you know, jump above grade level. The materials just have those supports built in. And so there's sections in the materials called like, are you ready for more? Things like that where an enhanced level class could easily take that next step. Something that I've learned a lot in recent years through this pilot process and attending these conferences, talking to people like Bill McCallum, is really the enhanced pathway isn't necessarily designed to go faster. It's designed, it should be designed to go deeper. And that's not something that I don't, I don't know how well we've achieved that to this point. And so I think these materials give us an opportunity to really do that with our enhanced kids.
Thank you.
Any more, any more questions?
No. Move approval of the beta pilot memo of understanding with open up resources for high school math instructional materials.
Second.
Third, fourth. Okay. Yeah. So we have it moved by Ms. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So it carries. Congratulations again. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
I feel better.
On to 20-point C. And this is Dr. DiAgostino.
Good evening, President Snell, Vice President Matoye, board members, Dr. Navarro, and cabinet. As you know, the district has been using the Titan Emergency Notification System for our high schools for the past three years. We've been really impressed with its performance. Tonight, we're asking you to approve an amended memorandum of understanding that's going to expand the use of Titan not only to all the schools in the district, but we're going to be using it with all our divisions and departments as well as our district brand standard for an emergency notification system. Between students, parents, teachers, and staff, we anticipate that Titan will be serving approximately 90,000 contacts throughout the district. We've asked the CEO, Vic Mergenian, to come in. As you know, it's really great when you can have the company's CEO come in, but more importantly, he is a CDM alum. We always like to point that out. He's here to give you a brief presentation on what Titan has done for the district and what it's going to be doing as you consider approval for tonight's MOU. So Vic, come on up.
Okay. Oh, let me set you up here. So.
Can he access his best card?
Right. Good evening, all. How's everyone doing tonight? I know it's getting late in the evening. We'll try and make this fun and rather quick. So a little bit about me. Titan HST is, let me go back here. So a little bit about me. I am from CDM. I'm a product of Newport Mesa. And, you know, I actually have no idea what the presentation before me was about. This is the first time I've heard of it. But it's something that's really great and I think that's one of the things that makes NMUSD so innovative. And, you know, when we're, when we're building these systems and we're working on these things, it's so funny because this system was actually built by a group of us from UCSD and my best friend from CDM. And I go back to the story when I was at CDM. We had Mr. Gear in ninth grade bio and everyone back then was stippling. And we took digital arts class with Ms. Brudnik. And back then, the computers, I mean, they barely had digital arts. And Mr. Gear said, you know, instead of stippling, what if you guys used cameras to digitally capture? And back then, digital cameras, there were no, I mean, just to give you guys an idea, there were no color cell phones. Digital cameras, I mean, were barely in existence. I think they held like 16 pictures. And so we used to go and we took all the stuff we learned in digital arts. We applied it through the technology of the cameras. We went into those bio classes. We probably spent four times as much time in the bio class as anyone else. But we took everything digitally and then we went back to the digital arts class and we applied that knowledge. And from that, years later in law school, I created a paperless law review. We're the first in the nation to have that. So applied those skills again. We took that, then we, we built Titan. So when you guys take, you know, the, the people who are here before me and looking at kind of taking information and applying it, computers can so easily these days process data. But it's very difficult to have analytical thinking and things like that. And so I really encourage you guys. It was really exciting to see something like that. But anyway, I kind of digress a little bit. So with Titan HST, you know, we are rooted in CDM. This is a community that we really care about. We have dozens of interns that come through us. Whenever, you know, when there was a threat at CDM, I personally went there to see what I could do to help out. We've got multiple scholarships at NMUSD. We really, really care about the community. And kind of the sad reality of where things are at, we're here today at an educational event, right? This is a board meeting. We're not in Afghanistan. We're not in Iraq. We're not in a prison. And, and who do we have standing here, sitting right next to us? A gentleman with a gun. Is the math book going to attack us? This is the reality of where we're at, you know? And so the thing is, when you've got a situation like this, you've got to have something that is purpose-built and driven because seconds matter. In the last year alone, our system was used 62 million times in the US alone. And we are trusted by the largest higher ed organizations in the whole country. We have marquee US landmarks that we secure. Private sector, it's dime a dozen these days. And with the public sector and government as well, after going through ridiculous RFPs and repetitive processes and et cetera. Every time, you know, we talk to the government sector, they always tell us, Vic, you know, we're only seven shootings away from out our sight for making a decision, you know? And that's kind of the reality of the market. But the thing is, if you look at FBI statistics, two-thirds of emergencies end before emergency personnel receive, arrive. And so when you're looking at that statistic, the person who's going to save you, or save you, is the person outside who is able to initiate a lockdown fast enough that you can barricade the door or get out. Because as fast as the police are, they will not get here quickly enough to do anything. And at the sites where there were police, including Columbine and some of the more recent shootings, they were not able to stop the shootings. And so the reality is, there are these incidents. And again, while we talk about shootings, 40% of the use of our system is medically related, including at NMUSD sites. These include things from heart attacks, stroke, food allergy, diabetic shock, broken bones. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And so your best bet is not to have a Swiss Army knife that's yay big with 17 attachments in there. If you've got a situation where it's war on your site, you need to have the strongest weapon you have against that. And that's quick information that gets disseminated within seconds so that you know what's going on. And I'm going to get into the technology of that in a moment. So what have we done that's different? Now, there are products on the market that are a one-way push notification, right? It doesn't take a scientist to have a one-way push notification. The problem is with a one-way push notification, first of all, you have to get that information up the food chain. So if you are a teacher or a student in the quad, if you're out on the PE field, if you're out on the football field, if you're in a classroom where the teacher blew a disc and the whole front office is gone because it's lunch and they couldn't call anyone in the front office, how are you getting that information up there? With Titan, you have two-way communication. So that's the first piece of it. Not only do you have the two-way communication, but we are also grabbing location data, but we don't track anyone in the background. So only if and when you need help, we know where you are and we know where to send help. And that's really kind of the key. So on the push notification side, we're able to outperform the other systems that are out there. Two-thirds of the sites that come to us come from competitor systems after they failed in an emergency. And the reason why that's significant is when you send out a push notification and two-thirds of emergencies end before emergency responders arrive, when it takes you minutes, hours, or days to go through, one of the competitor sites that had a deployment tried to send out a few hundred push notifications and another one, a couple thousand. It took hours to days to go through. They called the manufacturer and the, this company, and this is a company you guys know as well at this district, said, well, yeah, that's a lot of notifications. Well, great. What are you going to do when there's an emergency and it's at a site that has more than 30 users? Our system during the California Great Shakeout every fall is used in this state alone by every site at the same time and maintains a throughput of seconds. And that's what you've got because, excuse the French, but when there's an emergency, shit hits the fan. And if you think people are tweeting and messaging quickly during a football game, wait till there's a shooting. Wait till there's a drill. You should see what happens during the drill. People start calling our office when there's a drill and the site hasn't notified parents. So the thing is, you've got to have this two-way communication with something that's going to work quickly. With augmented reality, and I'll show you guys what that looks like, you can actually flip the phone up. This is technology that Apple is basically hedging on pretty largely at the moment. We deployed this one year before Apple deployed this. And what it does is it lets you flip up your phone like a camera and through the camera, so you can see the camera and you can see people floating through that. So if you've got a building, the 200 building is being shot at, you know, right now, schools are painting numbers on top of buildings so they know what the building is or they're like, where are people? You can flip your camera phone up, scan through the building, see where people are huddled at what altitude, what floor, and what corner, and tell the SWAT team to come in from that side or this side. You can see who's injured and who's not. That's the kind of technology we have, the eyes and ears. And you know what? You don't need some special hardware. Who here doesn't have an iPhone or an Android phone? That's all you need. Now, of course, the system is also accessible via text message, email, phone, web, all that stuff. But if you have an iPhone or an Android phone, we've got that level of technology that's built in in the palm of your hand. So with safety check-in with these push notifications, you can see what's going on. You can find people and you know how to respond. Real-time translation. This site has many sites. There are a lot of people who don't speak English as their primary language. Again, seconds count. There's no time to figure out what's going on. So we use computer-aided, computer-assisted translation. So you can message me in English, I'll get it in Spanish, the person next to me will get it in Chinese, Vietnamese. They can respond back in Vietnamese, mine will come to English, yours will go to Spanish, et cetera. It's computer-generated, so I'm not here to tell you it's 100%. But if you say run, I'll get run, sprint, jog, something like that. You'll get the idea, you better get out of where you're at, you know? And that's the power of this communication platform. It's redundant and secure. So again, there have been sites that have used other systems at NMUSD. One of them, there was a power outage. One of them was just a drill. They tried to send out notifications. They failed. They did not go out. With our system, we have geo-redundant infrastructure. We have servers up in multiple regions at the same time. This is very costly to do, but that's what we do so that if there's an emergency, no technology is 100%. But I'll, what I'll tell you is what we've done is so above and beyond what anyone else has done that if this system doesn't work, you better get on your knees and pray because God's the only person who's going to save you after that. And that's what we've done. Secure. Again, people are always worried about data security. We're independently audited by the same companies that audit the CIA and the FBI for data integrity. That's the level. So as much as we've got an educational setting here, and not to minimize the sensitivity of that, we also have diplomats, police officers, politicians, et cetera in the system. So the system has been safeguarded for the level. We did a pilot a couple of years ago with the European Commission. So that's the level with, and you know, we're in discussions with them now. So that's the level of data security that we realize. I mean, you're talking about state affairs. Let me talk about privacy-centric. We don't sell your information. We're not a Facebook. When we gather it, we only gather what we need. First name, last name, email, phone number, just what we need to get in touch with you. And a role type. Are you an admin, a student, a parent? You guys probably don't want a student locking down the site. You know, it would be a lot more effective than the old-school fire alarm, but you know, we don't allow that. Mesh networking. So we've already done a whole bunch of really cool things to make sure that the data goes through in an emergency. You know, if you're ever at a concert or a football game and you send a text message and it just kind of sits at the end and it doesn't, you don't get that little satisfying bloop where it goes through? So what we do is we sit on that and we monitor that. So if it's not going through, we let you cancel it out. We compress data locally. We do everything we can to push the data through because our servers can get it, but sometimes your networks get overloaded. Or at some of your sites, even when there's no emergency, there's no network connectivity. So what we've done is we've done everything possible to make this work over cellular and Wi-Fi. But wait, there's more. And you don't even have to pay shipping and handling for this part. Double. With mesh networking, and this is coming out at the end of this month, if everything has gone black, power's gone out, cell towers are down, you're in some, you know, The Rock is in the movie, Denzel Washington's in this movie. You know, you've got Arnold Schwarzenegger gearing up. The devices will be able to talk to each other directly via mesh networking. It's like walkie-talkies, except connecting directly. And those work in a range of 30 to 1,000 feet. And so, each device, if you're 30 feet from me, and then Ms. Flor is another 1,000 feet from you, it connects to her. If she's 1,000 feet from Ms. Yelsey, it'll connect to her. And you will continue to daisy-chain across the entire site infinitely. And so, a place that's a school that's very densely populated is the perfect scenario for actually even during a football game where the networks might be overloaded and this system will work. So, that's the level of technology that's built into there. Our system has multiple patents on it. We've actually invented. That's again why I'm so excited about what you guys are doing with math. The sciences, they teach you how to build, the arts teach you what to build. And if you don't have that creative thinking, you're never going to think of how to do things differently. And this is what difference means. We saved our first life within 20 minutes of deployment at a site. So, that's what technology and innovation means. Again, we talked about instant throughput. But the other thing I want to talk about, it's not just the servers that are reliable. They've been designed, and again, this goes back to those math lessons we were talking about. So, you take a look and you make kind of a car analogy, right? And so, you've got maybe if two-cylinder engines are powerful, four is better. If four is good, six is better. If six is great, eight is wonderful, you know? Except then you've got to build a gas station at your house at some point. So, what are all these cars doing these days, right? They're putting turbos on there, superchargers because you've got to maintain the power and any more power without infinitely larger engines. So, that's what we've done with our server infrastructure. Without getting into all the patented technology, we've built a system that is more intelligent and intelligently and algorithmically processes data. Because you've got to go from 0 to 100% load. It's not like a Facebook or a Netflix where every Friday night you have a certain level of load. Either no one's on it, it's like flies, you've got one or two, or you know, there's a bunch, everyone's on there. And so, that's the kind of stuff we've done that we can tell the difference between a denial-of-service attack where someone's trying to hack the system versus an actual legitimate growth curve on there. And that's, at the end of the day, this is all, you know, magic on the backend, but that's why it works in an emergency. We've already mentioned two-thirds of our educational contracts from competitor systems after failure during an actual emergency. And again, I want to clarify, even though there's all this wonderful stuff, we're accessible via the app and admins should have the app. It's highly recommended. But if you don't have the app, you can do almost everything except raising an emergency alert saying, "I need help." You can do everything else. You can get broadcast messages, lockdown notifications, safety check-in. All that stuff comes via text message, email, phone calls. So, I mean, you don't have to have the app. And, the really cool thing about all of this too is there's always new technology that we're deploying every couple weeks. And it's all included. So, you don't have to do anything. The same way you go to bed, you wake up in the morning and the new app is installed, doesn't look any different, but there's new functionality in there. And if you text message, if people don't have the app and they get this text messages, or if you send it from the web, when those people text message back, it comes in directly into your app or on the web portal. So, you've got all the comments in one place. If you send out a safety status request, say, "Where are you? Are you guys safe?" They can text back "one" for "safe," "two" for "not safe." And then they get another link. And then they can plot their location with a click. So, again, if you've got a flip phone. And, we always get asked about adoption at the sites. We've been at NMUSD for several years now. Does anyone want to take a venture, take a guess in all the years we've been here, how many people have asked to be removed from the system? In all the years we've been here? One parent of the year, one year. That's it.
I thought it was Dana.
So, we've had phenomenal acceptance of the system. We strongly encourage it only for emergency communication use. It can do more, obviously, but you start spamming people, they unsubscribe, and then the sites go, "Well, these people didn't get it." "Well, yeah, because you sent them, you know, 16 messages about the bake sale and nobody wants of that," you know? So, emergency communication. The other cool thing is because of the contracts, and again, just like we don't use your guys' name, I won't use the name of the sites, but these are some of the largest higher-ed college systems in the nation. We went through the wringer with them on visually and hearing impaired functionality. So, our system operates at the most high level of that. Even other systems and other apps and other platforms that this district uses, if you take a look at their accessibility documents, everything says "exception, exception, exception, exception." Ours doesn't say that. It's compliant with everything. So, it's fully accessible for everyone, not only from a language standpoint, but from a hearing and visually as well. Not only is the system accessible with the high contrast, the voiceover, and all that stuff, but it's accessible in different ways. If you've got 18th or T-Mobile, you can have a phone call with two or three, maybe six people on the call at the same time. If you're going to use your FaceTime on your iPhone to video chat, it does it with one person. We do 50 simultaneous video chats at a time per message. You can have as many messages as you want. 200 simultaneous audio calls per message, as many messages as you want. So, people who are deaf can sign language through our app. People who are hard of seeing can use the voiceover and then audio or video. So, again, it's about reaching as many people as we can in many ways as we can. And, we never stop because we're a tech company. It's different. Video medicine is coming out at the end of this year. So, what that will do is we're partnering with some of the largest medical institutions in the country along the East Coast. We've got some of the most well-known Ivy League schools and we're working with their hospitals. Along the West Coast, some of the largest local hospital systems can publicly disclose their names yet, but when I tell you guys, you'll be like, "Yeah, obviously." You know, it's very well-known. And what we're doing with that is so if you guys opt in and there's an emergency at a site, your PE coach or your secretary no longer has to play MD. They will be connected into actual MDs and nurse practitioners. That alleviates liability from you guys and it brings in video medicine and accessibility in a way that is otherwise not accessible. And, what we're doing with that, we're also going to be adding hardware down the road on that. And so, there will be more and more things that we can do with the system. We also have eye beacons coming out later on in the year. Those are little fist-sized sensors you can put in each room. They're passive, they work on batteries that last multiple years. We're adding intelligent features into them from integrating carbon monoxide and smoke detection into that. So, if there's an emergency, you know which rooms to respond to first because you know which one's on fire. We're also incorporating gunshot detection into those systems as well too. So, you'll know generally where those are coming from. There's more and more technology. We're always racing, we're always pushing the bar to get further and better. NMUSD. Now, this is, our system is privacy-centric. So, the data gets deleted every 90 days unless you guys pull it and archive it. And so, we can only kind of see what's at a high level. This is just the things that have been communicated to me and/or that we can see from a high level by looking at the logs ahead of this meeting. During the last 90 days, NMUSD has had multiple SOSs where people raised an alert. And they had, there were stranger issues, there were gas smells, medical issues, fires, drugs, and drug overdose issues at NMUSD sites. I'm sure there's more. This is just what we've been told about and what we've seen over the last, this is just the last 90 days. Safety check-in requests, there's been multiple safety check-in requests. People are trying to find where people were, you know, during emergencies or, you know, some might have been drills. Broadcast messages, multiple regarding drills, fire threats, evacuations, giving directions, strangers, warning people, sending a picture, telling people, "Hey, watch out for this person." Emergency materials. Site after site has loaded emergency materials. So, when there's an emergency, they've got everything from rosters to site maps to contact information. And if they need to, they can quickly click on that digitally and send it out to everyone, whether they have the app or not. So, you're mobilizing your sites like that. Chat groups. What a lot of sites have done, and this is how it's intended to be used, is they've created, for example, a safety team. So, it's always sitting there. And the cool thing with Titan, unlike a text message, you don't need people's phone numbers. So, it works over both cellular and Wi-Fi and without sharing all the phone numbers. I'm sure you guys want to give everyone your phone number, but to the extent you don't, you don't need to do that with this system. So, that's the level of technology that's here. And again, your sites have other options and they've had other options. And there's been a waitlist over the last year and a half, particularly in the K through 6 levels where they said, "Hey, the high schools, the middle schools have it. Why can't we get it?" And so, there's, I think there's a level of excitement that, you know, will be adopted well. So, what I want to do is I want to show you guys real fast what the system looks like in action. If you take a look at the screen on the left, this is a screen that everyone has access to. We can customize the icons per site, per what you guys want. These are just some standard icons. So, you select Shooter and then you select Send Alert. That's it. It grabs your GPS location and says, "I'm here, I need help." Whoever's an admin, whoever's security personnel, if you have SROs and NMUSD does have SROs on the system, they receive it as well. And then you get bumped to that second screen. Do you want to chat? Do you want to do an audio call or a video call? That's it. You don't need an instruction manual. We used to teach the kids how to use it. They wouldn't pay attention because they already know how to use it. So, you know, it's easier than any other app that's out there. Are there any questions on this slide? Basically, the goal when we built the system was to not need an instruction manual. This is what augmented reality looks like, by the way. That's a room with fire. That's you seeing through the fire and seeing where people are and who's safe and who needs help. That's what you could do. So, if you're at CDM and someone approaches, the police department approached from Newport Beach Police, and they're in the parking lot and they're staging, they can stand there and scan, they'll pick up their phone, and they'll go like this. And they'll be able to see at a distance what buildings, what floor, where to go out. Now, it does use GPS and all that, so you know, you might not get Room 401 versus 402, but you'll know where that emergency is and where to respond to. So, that's how that works. Any questions on that?
Yeah, but I'm sure we need a lot more time to explain it to me.
So, what we do is, can you see on the left phone how there's a little circle at the bottom right-hand corner?
I can see that.
So, you're the white dot in the middle and then you can see all the red dots and blue dots around the perimeter. And so, you just stand and you pivot and you can see the distance. And the cool thing is, all you have to do to get there is that screen I showed you in the previous screen. So, let me go back here. So, this is when you've got an emergency going, right? If you click on any one of those, on chat, audio, or video, you click on any one of those, you get bumped over to this next screen. And in that screen, obviously, if you have a text, that's going and whatnot. If not, at the top, you can see on the phone on the right, you've got a standard view, a hybrid view that's got that satellite imagery, and the one on the right is augmented reality. So, all you do is click on AR and you get the screen on the left.
Okay, okay.
And it's all there in front of you. And the thing is, there's a pin, so you can see exactly what you're doing. And we do train all the administrators, law personnel, we train all them. But there's not a very, excuse me, there's not a very high learning curve on a system like this.
No, it looks pretty.
I know.
Pretty neat, huh?
Pretty cool.
I could think of a lot of uses for that.
It's not x-ray vision. Mass broadcast and lockdown notifications. Again, we don't allow students and a lot of sites don't want teachers doing this, so it's mostly admin. But the way this works in the real world is a teacher will press an SOS button and they say the student's missing, there's a threat here, there's whatever. The admin will respond back and forth. And you've got all admin getting that. So, you've got, you know, safety and numbers if someone's in a meeting. And, basically, what they do is they say, "Oh, okay, this is what's going on. Yeah, that's a real threat, you have a picture, et cetera, et cetera." Then they broadcast this out. So, you can send out whatever message you want. You can even have preset messages programmed in there. Then you can add a picture, you can add video. And then you can send it out via the app, text message, email, phone call. And if you've got Twitter and Facebook, we even post to those if you're connected ahead of time. So, it catches everyone in every way that you can. And again, we recommend using this mode because if people have a different language on their phone, it'll translate that content in real time. So, you don't have to worry about that. And that's a meeting when we had with Cabinet. The Ares database has the language that people prefer their content in. We will respect those values and accordingly, we'll translate on the backend automatically. And if you've got a particularly soothing voice, you can also do a voice recording and send that out so it's not as robotic when people get it by phone. But if you do that, you can't have the real-time translation. So, you know, you get one or the other there. Any questions about this? But again, what you see is what you get. Broadcast tab on the bottom right, you can see that blue icon selected. All you do is, it says your message, you fill it out. Attach a picture if you have one. And then at the top, you can see where it says "next." Just click "next" and it sends out.
So, you're, okay, so, a couple of things, just on this. In terms of broadcasting, you're indicating that there will be, there may be a hierarchy, but that's up to the, that's up to the district how to...
Yes.
Right now, we have locked, you have a lockdown. Only certain people can call a lockdown.
Yes.
Versus, I know that we're talking about that anybody, anywhere on a campus can call a lockdown. We're giving the freedom to be able to call it.
No, we're not allowing anyone to do a lockdown. So, what we do...
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, just clarify.
So, one of the great things about Titan is that Vic and his team will customize however we want to create broadcasts. And, right now, it's two-way communication internally with staff and district hierarchy.
Got it, okay.
With parents, it would simply be broadcast messaging. We will also be working with Vic to create the teams. For example, we're going to have Titan, we've already got the crisis response team using Titan. We have school sites using Titan. We're planning to have different divisions and departments that typically heretofore hadn't used Titan, using Titan. So, there's going to be a training and a scale-up schedule that we're going to work on. We will be working with law enforcement too to get their recommendations on, they obviously have communication systems and teams that they use when they're in a crisis response mode or an incident command situation. So, we'll be, we'll be having a lot of conversations over the summer, developing a training schedule, developing teaming schedules, and then scaling up who's going to have what kind of access.
Okay.
But that still has to be worked out.
And the other, I'm sorry, the other question was, I know that when I went to the CSEA leadership, one of their, one of their concerns was, you know, the grounds people are out there working and there's a lockdown, hello, but they're not notified.
Right.
So, I'm assuming that you're having conversations with letting people know who, you know, if there's somebody on the campus that is doing, is mowing the lawn...
Who can't hear anything.
Can't hear anything, or it doesn't have it. We've got to make sure that that...
Yeah, our goal is every employee in the district is going to be trained on Titan.
Okay.
Every division, every office, so...
Okay, so they'll be notified.
Mass notifications, emergency communications needs to happen. I think the two variables that Vic pointed out that we're really impressed with is throughput time, how quickly does it take to get to people, and how easy it is to use. So, you have everyone from very highly specialized personnel to everyone else throughout the district who is going to have access to this very user-friendly system. And, in fact, I did a CSEA Shadow Day with this fine gentleman right behind me. So, it's you, Stu. It's you, buddy. Yeah, it's you. Anyways, and we talked, we had a great conversation about emergency notifications. And I was talking to you about Titan. And, I think you find value in the system as well. And so, we're very excited that people like Stu and people in his area of work who support all of us working together to support students and families, we're all going to be tied into this system.
Great, okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. And again, the system is completely customizable. We're not here to instigate or determine protocol. We're just here to offer the communication tool. So, for example, some sites, you know, the typical deployment will be, the principal will sit on top of their sites, but the district can sit on top of everything and push down to all sites. There's complete customizability. Another thing you can do that some sites do, we haven't done it at NMUSD, but we could, is if you had something like a graduation or a school game or whatever, you could even have a campus code people text when they get there. They're loaded into the system. And if you send out a notification, when you're sending out broadcasts, you can select students, parents, teachers, and you could select guests. And so, you could even have people who timeout. So, if you've got a Battle of the Bay, people just text the code when they're there, they're in for the night, then they're out the next day. So, it's completely customizable to whatever you need. So it's completely customizable to whatever you need. And again, in those emergencies, you don't need to have every single person know. If, you know...
Yeah.
Forty percent of the people on that football field at Battle of the Bay are people who are in the system and the rest are just neighbors. If forty percent know, then they'll follow the people running.
Then somebody will know.
So that's how that system works.
That's cool.
When you were talking about connectivity, if you can make it work at CDM, you can make it work anywhere. It's harder than that Wi-Fi networking stuff.
And the cell networks there are really poor too. I actually switched from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile because of that.
East Plough is just horrible.
It's crazy.
Non-existent network there. But, yeah, but it's been used at CDM successfully for many years, so. Emergency materials, this is an example of what this section looks like. So this is a site map. You can upload these documents, even pull in from Dropbox, things like that. Again, you can see here, it's been uploaded only to the admins, but you could add it for guests, whoever you want. And then in an actual emergency, things that maybe you don't want out there daily, like a site map. Well, if there's an actual emergency, maybe you don't care as much. And so you can go into the emergency material and hit send and push it out to whatever user types that you want to send it to. So it's all about empowering you guys to do whatever you need to do when the time is right, from the palm of your hand.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's basically the system in a nutshell. I'd love to answer any questions you guys have and go from there.
Okay. Too many.
You did a really nice, yeah, presentation here. Does anybody have any comments? Ms. Yelsey?
Well, if there are no comments, I just wanna say I have to recuse myself on this because I am on his advisory board. But I also wanna say how proud I am of him and his whole team. He came to me several year...
Yeah, four or five years ago.
Five years ago and wanted to beta test it. We were talking about beta testing math programs at CDM. And it was fortunate that that worked out. And when you see him here with his enthusiasm, he's like this twenty hours a day. I give you four hours to sleep. But he really is, and he and his team are working so hard on this. And he's obviously not gonna go into all the other companies and colleges and schools he services. But it's pretty amazing what they've done and...
Mrs. Flor.
I just have a question, because again, I'm pulling up the contract here.
Sure.
And I just said, okay, got it, ninety thousand. But it has zero in the total cost, yearly cost. And so I just want to understand that.
So this is a place where we've... I've done so many things to try and give back to the community. The story that I'll give you is when I was in high school, I actually got an internship through Mrs. Heth and Ms. Levitri, who's now Ms. Hughes, with the city manager, Homer Blue Dell. And he invested so much in me all those years and then Dave Kiff did afterwards with senior projects and things like that. And at the time, I used to try and do things and, you know, we were socialized well in Newport Beach. So, you know, you'd take a box of chocolate, say thank you or this. I mean, really, as a sixteen-year-old, there's not much you can do, you know? And I would say, what can I do, what can I do? And they always said, pay it back forward sometime when you can. And so now fortunately, I feel very blessed to be in a position where we can do that. And on our advisory board, I actually have the person I interned for, the city manager of Newport Beach, now works for me. So, you know, we've come around full circle over the last ten to fifteen years. This is a true NMUSD story, right? And so what I wanted to do with this is, you know, we sell this technology in the private sector for about ten dollars per user per month. So, I mean, the cost of something like this, it's built... We're talking about securing military bases, right? I mean, so if it came down to cost, I mean, this district seems like they're doing okay, but the educational sector can't afford this technology. But it's the only place where it's not a military base and it's a place that's getting shot up left and right, you know? So we've gotta do something. We make enough money off the private sector, you know, the company fortunately does very well. And so with Newport Mesa, what we've wanted to do is donate it back to the community to do something so at least kids feel safe here. And we do all these things, we have the scholarships, we have the mentorship programs. I mean, I write dozens of college apps every year. We have two to three dozen college, high school kids that come through us every year. This is the first year where we had high school kids who graduated have now come back as college students to intern with us.
Oh, cool.
You know, when we had the suicide, we bought baked goods for the entire school. I mean, we really care about this community. And so it's not about money at this site, we just wanna do something to help. And this is how we're trying to do that.
On behalf of the Newport Mesa School District and the whole district, thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one more thing because I was at CDM awards night, last night, and they have a new scholarship in honor of Kathy Heth, who we acknowledged tonight at our retirement party. And it is given by Titan and Vic's law firm.
Yeah. We have two scholarships at CDM. They're not based on merit, they're based on community service. This past weekend, we actually had... So I found out there's a lot of human trafficking in Orange County. And so I rounded up the mayor, the DA, and we had a gala, three hundred people at Pelican Hill to raise money for Orangewood, which I know works with NMUSD too. So we're just trying to do something that's good. We can't afford, just based on business, I can't donate it everywhere. But if we can do something here where it matters and some of the smaller towns in the Midwest, places like that where they really don't have the money to do something like this, we donate it to those sites too. So we're just trying to make...
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Jeez, I don't even know if we need to take a vote, but...
Yes, you do.
Move approval of the memorandum of agreement between the...
Would you guys like me... I'm sorry to interrupt, would you guys like to meet two people from the team?
Sure.
We do have Ms. Serene Nassar and Mr. Ryan Kalili. Serene Nassar is a vice president of... One of the vice presidents of our company and she does a lot of the trainings for Newport Mesa. So that's really kind of the gist of what's specialized with her role here. And Ryan Kalili is actually also from my alma mater, UCSD. And he is our lead engineer and has built a product that largely, almost every single day, with the exception of a random Walmart phone here and there, maintains a hundred percent craft-free rate, which is four times better than the Apple apps do, Facebook or Amazon apps do.
Wow.
Wow, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Staying up late for this.
President Snell? Before the board takes a vote, I do wanna point out that the agreement that Vic has presented to the board is actually a two-year agreement.
Yeah, I was gonna...
And on the description on the agenda item, it stated only the 2018, 19 year.
Oh, it's two years.
But I wanted to point out it's two years. So for the record...
I was making that up because I saw that.
2018 to 20...
Yeah, it's 2000. So approve the memorandum of agreement between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Titan HST Incorporated as the district's emergency notification system for all schools and departments in the 2018, 2020 school years.
Second. Okay. So, Mrs. Flor has made the motion and Ms. Matoye has seconded. And I know you're abstaining. Ms. Yelsey is abstaining, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for staying until ten o'clock.
Just for the record, Ms. Yelsey recused.
Oh, for the record, Ms. Yelsey recused herself. Okay. Twenty point D. Adopt resolution number thirty-eight oh six eighteen regarding layoff of classified employees.
Good evening. Yes. Each year, we, sites need to reevaluate their funding as well as the work that is occurring. And in this particular case, we're bringing forward to you a resolution. We have three positions within the classified area. An instructional assistant, instructional assistant student development, and an instructional assistant technology one, where there is lack of work or a lack of funds. And so this resolution is the process in which to lay off those classified employees. I will share with you that our staff, Kristen Clark, as well as Pam Saunders from CSEA, has met with each of these individuals to talk about the impact and talk about the choices that they have available to them. So tonight, we ask that you approve this resolution.
Move adoption of resolution thirty-eight oh six eighteen regarding layoff of classified employees.
Second. Okay, so it's been moved by Ms. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. And this is a roll call vote, okay.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now we're gonna move to board member reports.
Snell, I'm gonna have to go 'cause I left my mom there without anybody, so...
Okay.
And she's definitely trying to text me, so, you know, I apologize that I can't stay through.
Yeah, it's going like, thank you.
I know she's okay 'cause she's texting me.
I know.
I'm just a little... She's not texting you, I've fallen, is she?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay.
We have to get her on the tight end.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Take care. Okay, Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, it is late and I don't wanna take too much... I don't wanna take too much time, man, we've had so much time since our last board meeting. Everything that's been happening has been really good things. I think we've all been to so many award ceremonies, already a graduation, all kinds of things. I hate to cut short all this, but...
Go for it.
Okay. I'll just mention a few. Several of us went to an AP Environmental Science project presentation at Estancia High School. And this was from the AP environmental classes at Costa Mesa and Estancia. And Ms. Rasmussen started this a couple of years ago when we were working with the Banning Ranch Land Trust. And now it's taken over by another organization since that closed. But these projects were really amazing. And just as an example, one of the things that I learned that I didn't know is they... Someone did a study of Miracle Grow versus fruit waste. It was called...
Detritus.
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 And they found out that banana peels, apple, all that kind of stuff works better than Miracle Grow in helping plants grow. And they were all very hands-on projects like this. It was really interesting. And I know they would like to spread that to all our high schools. So I think at some point this summer, they'd like to meet with district staff to see how they can get that kind of program in our other schools. I went to East Plough Open House the other night, and the reason I mention that specifically is they had a grand opening of their new Makerspace. And they call it because they are the East Plough Otters, it's called the Otter Space. They have a big sign that's been painted on the wall and it's really very cool. Everyone was super impressed, it was packed, and that was really nice. And then earlier in the evening, I had gone in to a Chromebook discussion with the fourth grade parents because their kids will get them next year and they were all simply amazed. And enthused that they were getting it, they didn't know that they were literally the last people to get it. But everybody is very excited to finally get that program over there. I also spent one of my days last week doing senior projects at CDM. Amazing projects, amazing presentations from some of these kids. You know, we're really in good hands with some of the areas and the avenues that the kids wanna take from our schools. So that was pretty cool. I went to NCE for a flag deck because they have a, what they call a trifecta this year. They were a distinguished school, an exemplary arts school, and they received a platinum award from PBIS Coalition. So that was... I mean, in one year to have three things at a school like that was really impressive. And they had two of their kids that they gave scholarships to from CDM who came back. They presented them each with a thousand dollar scholarship, but they also talked to the kids. And these little kids sitting on the blacktop were in awe of these high school seniors who were saying, "I used to play on those monkey bars and I couldn't get across the monkey bars when I first started. And so my dad took me to the park every day and we would practice and we would practice. And it was that resiliency that made me get across. And that's what I've used ever since throughout my career up to now." I mean, really, they were model students. It was amazing. So it was all wonderful. And the rest, lots of awards, special things, Special Olympics, which was fabulous once again. And you guys can finish the rest.
Okay, Mrs. Franco? No report. Mr. Davenport?
No report this evening.
Mrs. Flor?
Well, I think the highlight for me was attending the Early College High School, at this point in time, the Early College High School graduation, which was amazing. All students, every single one of them is going on to college, except for two who are joining the military. One young woman is joining the Marines and one young woman is going... One young man is going into the Army. So every single one of those graduates is going somewhere and, you know, all over. A large number are going into nursing, which was fabulous. And then had the opportunity to participate and witness the award ceremony at Back Bay, which is some of our most challenging students. And as Van said, over a hundred thousand dollars was given in scholarships to the students over there. And it was just fabulous, so. Those are my two.
I agree with Mrs. Yelsey, I've got a list that's so long, I don't know when I slept. But I wanted to say that I attended the special ed prom, which was really fun, although I didn't have my poodle skirt nor my pink lady's jacket, but it was a fifties theme. And the kids were having a great time. They had... And thank you to NMFT Retired for their sponsorship for that because that's a pretty neat thing that happens. Mrs. Snell and I went to the robotics competition. Every year it gets better. The kudos were from the entire ed tech team, but everyone focused and said, congratulations to Christie Darnell 'cause that's her baby and that's what she does. And this year, it's amazing. I didn't quite realize that they know... The children learn, the students ahead of time know what their challenges are going to be. So then they build their robots to be able to handle that challenge, so they're different. And they program them to be able to handle that challenge. And to watch them perform the challenges and get frustrated like we do because it's all technology and it's computers. But it's so exciting and the stands were full of parents, so... And food trucks came, we missed the food trucks, but that's okay. We also both attended with Mrs. Yelsey the SOI Awards. And SOI is Save Our Youth and it's an organization that was started by Gene Forbath a long time ago, but has worked its way up. They're housed at... It's a youth center that's housed at our best center. And they provide all sorts of opportunities for kids, but they gave a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarships that night. I know, it's what I said. I went, wow, that is so cool. And there was... The awards, do you wanna talk about them? Go ahead. Okay. The Estancia High School awards, we go to... I'm going to Mesa next week, blah, blah, blah. It's... But it's just so wonderful because this is why we're in the business for the kids. And what's even more exciting is when one child wins an award, three or four kids that are there get excited for the child that wins the award. So you see that giving and taking all the time. And next week, I'm gonna be attending a flag deck at Sonora Elementary School. And they have the high school seniors, after they've received their caps and gowns, will come back in their cap and gown and parade through a flag deck to pomp and circumstance. So that I'll talk about kids, 'cause now they're all decked out in their garb. And it gives a firsthand response. I don't care how much we teachers and educators can tell the kids, work hard, do everything else, but these are their friends, their family, and they're graduating and the message is, you can't do, this is what you have to do. So I'm done. Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, I just have one more thing. I just got a text from someone who was at the Newport Beach City Council meeting tonight. And they approved funding another half of a school resorts office.
Yay!
Just put it out there, so...
This is breaking news.
Yay, breaking news. So we can find the other half.
Wonderful.
There goes your budget, Jeff.
Yeah, good for them. Okay, well...
Where was that line?
Everything has sort of been mentioned as Ms. Matoye talks about, this is the smile season. And when I was wearing my Fitbit, I'm not wearing it anymore, I loved it because I would get steps every time I clapped. Thirteen thousand, yeah, yeah. So it is, it's a great, great time of year. It's busy and... But it's so fulfilling. I just wanna mention the Newport Harbor High School Jazz Picnic, which was Sunday. And it was really nice. One of the horn players was having a little trouble and I found out, well, they announced, he had had braces put on his bottom teeth like two days before and he's trying to play a trumpet, can you imagine? But they're so talented and they have won many awards and traveled nationally to play, so. Yeah, it was a great... It's been a great few weeks. So, moving on.
You have committee reports?
Oh, I do, committee report.
Sorry. The ROP, I just wanted to let you know that apparently in the budget, there is funding that's been granted. Not as much as we want, but they've got the three hundred million, half of it, a hundred and fifty thousand will go... A hundred and fifty million will go to CTIG. And the rest of it will go to, which is the California Incentive Grant Program for our... For school districts to apply, and ROP will apply, of course. And CTIG, it's Career Technical Education Incentive Grant. There you go. They call it CTIG. And the other hundred and fifty million will be going to Workplace Innovation, which is going to the Community College. With the understanding it's supposed to be passed down to the K-12, but...
Yeah.
Not gonna happen. And we're having our meeting on Friday this week because all of the other schools in our district, in our consortium, our JUA, are graduating. And on that note, I just wanna let you know that our students, we are having summer school, but our students in Newport Mesa do not have the opportunity to participate except in culinary and/or at the crop site because all of the others, all of the other classes, which is... Yeah, which are starting... Oh, by the way, oh, what are they starting? The eighteenth. And those are all draw... The engineering, civil engineering classes, several of the computer and music technology classes. A lot of classes are being offered at all of the different sites and all the within the district, but our kids can't participate because they are still in school.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Navarro?
Just real quick, I wanted to jump on the Ed Bell bandwagon and let you know that, you know, one of the things, what he talked about was, you know, Sean's this really amazing, passionate leader. And, you know, he was... He had some good instincts when Project Hope Alliance came his way. You know, I didn't know what it was, sounded good theoretically, I thought, okay, that could work. But he really just had some faith and, you know, and now we're thinking about working with him. And while we're working with him and we're hoping to spread it to other schools in the district. So I think that's what Ed was talking about, you know? He's got this real sense about what could be good for kids and what could be good for the school and, you know? And none of us are perfect, but, you know, I think overall, I think I really admire what he did in that arena and that the way Ed characterized it is pretty good.
Yes, his whole letter is wonderful. Ms. Olson?
Ms. Holcomb.
Mr. Holcomb.
No report.
Mr. Trader?
No report.
Good run of roll, Dr. Brown.
I've said enough.
You've caused us enough of shit today.
You have.
I know. You have that to report.
Just real quickly, tomorrow, lights are going off. Tomorrow, we have our community advisory, special educator tea over at Early College. We have over a hundred folks who were nominated by parents and students. And so it's administrators, teachers, lots of classified staff, aides, bus drivers, sometimes custodians. So it's a great event and we're looking forward to hopefully seeing some of you there tomorrow.
We'll be here, we'll be there.
Move adjournment?
Second.[1796.02]